Hello.
Hi.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome back for those of you who had a little break. We all sort of had a little break. So I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM. And this meeting is being recorded and live broadcast by Amherst Media. Welcome, everybody. Okay, our first order of business is to approve the minutes of February 5th, 2018. If people have a chance to look. Yes, Mr. Dillon?
A couple of minor edits on item 4B.
Yep.
Dr. Morris recommended that Mr. Dillon take over the meeting in his role as vice chair of being in his role as secretary.
Thank you.
Third in command, that is. And then 4C, the second 4C, on the next page, in the middle, noting that the next meeting, the school committee may want to vote on submitting a statement of interest to the MSBA for Fort River. I think it should be to the MSBA for Fort River and Wildwood.
Okay, I had a few different... Well, just on that point, because we have two Cs, we should probably just make that direction. I had a couple of little things. One is in 4, I assume, 4B, where it talks about the members of the dual-language emergent subgroup. It's actually Lissa, L-I-S-S-A, and she wasn't actually a member. She was, you could say, instead of Ann Lissa Bonifat, it's actually Pierce Bonifat, P-I-E-R-C-E-dash-Bonifat. And you could say, and key contributions from, because there was sort of, we just wanted to be really clear about who the original members were. And then, on the first page, there was just a little, sort of a funny little typo under announcements at 6:10 PM. It's the third sentence. It says, "If stated that if Pelham also chooses to create a board," it's just a typo. Dr. Morris spoke about the efficiency of regionalization, noting both pros and cons.
He stated.
He stated?
Yeah.
And was that Dr. Morris saying, okay, so he stated, yeah. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, if not, I'll take a motion.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, thank you.
Did you describe what the motion was? Did I miss that? You just said I would take a motion when we had the so moved.
Oh, I'll take, shall we draw that again?
I mean, just follow the...
I'll take a motion to approve the minutes of February 5th, 2018.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. All right, great. Moving on, announcements and public comment. So if anyone would like to make a public comment, you can step up to the microphone and you have three minutes to speak. Anybody you'd like to make a public comment? Okay. Announcements from the committee. Anybody have any announcements? All right, we're all good there. Okay, superintendent's update, number three.
Sure, so I think these were on the back table. Hopefully I ran us a copy. So first thing, I'm going to go out of order. I just want to announce my excitement that Diane Chamberlain, who's here tonight, was announced the permanent superintendent of Fort River School. So congratulations, Diane.
He's the grade, not the secretary.
Principal, sorry. Couple of us were in a different state, and I think I'm still wishing I was there. But yes, no, principal of Fort River School, and congratulations to Diane, and as I said, congratulations to Fort River.
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Very, very exciting, and it was fun announcing that. It was like, it was literally a receiving line of staff when it was announced, the staff, like it was a wedding. So it was well-earned and congratulations. Just, I'm going to say this, there was a phone call and email, but we rescheduled the early release day from when it was in February 7th till tomorrow because of a snow day on February 7th. There's important professional development happening in all of our schools, but I just want to say it. Take every opportunity and every forum where I can share that, so hopefully we avoid confusion. It's also been on our website. Just a district-wide one, at the regional level, we've talked about capital expenses, and one of the things that we are asking the towns to study is the regional use of our regional buildings. And one aspect of that is what the kind of architectural infrastructure and financial implications of moving sixth grade to the middle school. So one of the things I want to be really clear about is this is not a suggestion we're actually going to do that. We're not studying it on an educational level. It's that this is a question that, like, what are the cicadas that come back every couple of years? And we never actually get the data that would ground us in a conversation whether we want to have it on the educational implications. So I both wanted to make sure that I'm sharing with the committee and publicly that this is being studied, and there's no process here to do anything with it other than to have a data point that could guide a future process if the committee and the community want to follow up on it. But I know that there might be some confusion or concern about where that's going, but that's, it's purely an infrastructure financial study, not an educational one. And I'm making no claims either way that it's a good idea, a bad idea. I think once we get that back, which is probably, if it gets approved this spring, likely a year from now, we'd have some data. Probably a little optimistic, probably a little later in the spring next year. Then we can engage whether we want to start a process and community engagement around that or not. But there's no, there's no hand-tipping of, this is the direction we're going or not going. It's just that we need to have some answers to some foundational questions to then figure out what we want to do with it. It's also part of a larger study looking at the middle school, high school, which has been discussed at the regional level. But because sixth grade's at the elementary, I wanted to make sure that I said that in public. Pioneer Excellence in Teaching Awards also, since Diane's here, will mention that Carissa Ackroyd, the teacher at Fort River, is one of the four recipients, and we're very happy to be honoring her next, April.
April.
April, sorry, we're almost in March, so skipping a little bit. A couple of registrations events. One's actually happening, our middle school registration for incoming seventh graders. It's happening right now. But later this week on Thursday, for the first time, we're doing a full information registration event for the Amherst Public Schools. It's geared not just for students entering kindergarten, but also students who are in other schools or other school districts who are interested in finding out more about our district. So principals, a lot of our team will be there, Ryan Harb will be there, I'll bring some local food. That's always on people's minds, especially since many people will bring children to the event. And we'll talk about before and after-school care, which I know is a concern of many families when they're coming to our district. So we're really looking forward to the event on the Thursday night. Any of you are certainly welcome to come as well. Saturday, this has been announced already, but we have an event we're partnering with a national organization called Tinker Garden, which is around having students be active learners and being active outside learners as well. So hopefully the weather will cooperate. It's good we're doing it in the afternoon from what I look on Saturday. The morning may be a little drenched. But really, it's around when students are home, this came out of the homework work, if you think back, and revising the homework practices and expectations. And it's a local parent in our district who runs this national organization. So it's been a great partnership already, just helping us think about how do we engage students' minds creatively, artistically, and scientifically. And so that's on Saturday at 3 o'clock. And last two things are about enrollment working group. So Kristen Rodriguez, Dr. Kristen Rodriguez, who's the consultant who supported the enrollment working group, she actually recently did a presentation at DESI and referenced our enrollment working group and the work that the groups, subgroups did about doing research, citing findings, and justifying statements and conclusions. And she thought the work was of high quality, she integrated that. And since that time, she's gotten asked to present, do the same presentation at a national conference, which is great that it's highlighting the work of our folks in Amherst, including the chair. And my last one is that on March 13th, our next meeting, the preschool access subgroup of the enrollment working group will present their findings. That's the last subgroup. At the same meeting, I'll present a formal response to all the subgroups and what I've found and present a possible path forward. Sorry, I'm a little more wordy than I usually am for these.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay. So first item on our new and continuing business, I believe we are lucky enough to have a special guest presenter, Philis Hardy.
Hi, Philis Hardy.
From the, I'm going to let you introduce yourself, because I'm still saying Massachusetts, and I know it's not that.
I know. We just changed our name to Multi-State Association for Bilingual Education. We did start out in Massachusetts, we are primarily based in Massachusetts, but we are an organization that supports bilingual and dual-language programming. And because there are so fewer in our state, we chose to open it up to working with Connecticut and Rhode Island as well. So it has helped us tremendously to increase our resources and our capacity to help each other out. So we changed our name to Multi-State when they said, hey, what about us? So, okay, we'll work, we'll do that. We go by an acronym MABE, so we kept that the same, and that's pretty much how people call us, MABE.
That's great. So, Dr., yeah, I mean, I just wanted to say that this is a, Ms. Hardy is here as a follow-up to work that's being done over the past many months, sort of formulating ideas about dual, a dual-language program that could possibly come into our district and at the elementary level. And as many of you know, I was part of that group, so I'm very excited that we're taking this next step. Dr. Morris, so Dr. Morris knew that that work was going on, and he was in contact with MABE and was able to connect with Ms. Hardy, who was willing to come and give a presentation. And I, this, the way we set this up is that she's going to do a presentation, and there's going to be an opportunity for community members to ask questions and have a dialogue, which isn't usually how we do school committee meetings, but this is a special situation, and we feel like that that would be really appropriate and wonderful if people were interested in engaging in that kind of dialogue. And we'll also have an opportunity, obviously, for a school committee to ask questions as well. So, yeah, Dr. Morris.
Just one additional note is that the presentation that you're seeing on the screens is slightly different from what's in the packet. So if you're following along, I think you mostly follow along, but if you see something different, it's not that you're missing a page or something like that. Because I feel like me, you'd be like, oh, looking over, and I don't want people to think about...
I just added some examples, but I want to speak about them rather than just show it to me, because it wouldn't make any sense to you.
Just great. And I just want to also thank Ms. Hardy, because we've been in touch a couple of times throughout the winter. I think we're still in the winter.
Yes, we are.
And it doesn't feel like it, but it will on Friday. And I just appreciate, as the subgroup was working, and I was thinking about conceptualizing what would that potentially look like in Amherst with the work they were doing, what I was reading, I just really appreciate your support, you know, that we're hoping will continue well into the spring, because it is a different venture that was presented than what we've done in the past. And it's great to have people who are relatively local with the expertise of supporting districts and helping us think through some of the kind of large and small questions that were in my head. So really appreciate you being here and appreciate your continued support.
Thank you. Well, we want to thank you for reaching out to us as well and are so happy that you are another district who is considering dual-language programming, particularly since we just passed the Look Act, which is now hopefully going to increase the amounts of programs that our districts offer. We are aware that there have been interest in your community for a long time, because several of your community members are actually members of our organization. So we have been in kind of touch with what's going on here, and so when we were approached by you, we were really happy to help out. So I'll start my presentation. Yeah, okay, here's my agenda. I'll explain who we are. As a teacher, I am a teacher, so I want to define the English approaches versus bilingual approaches to teaching. I find in the work that I did with, I was part of the Language Opportunity Coalition, which really focused on changing the Chapter 71A, the Look Acts. And we found that we really needed to explain to everybody we came in contact with what are English approaches versus bilingual approaches. So I'll do that really quickly here. I'll reference the research around dual-language programming. I know that you have had some information shared with you by the task force. And then go into some of the program features that you'll be needing to think about if you choose to open this program, and then what are the resources that we have to offer you to help you actually start and open up your doors. So our vision is to make sure that there are bilingual language opportunities all over our Commonwealth for students. We in particular are advocates for English language learners, but we also want to make sure that everybody has this opportunity for learning languages. And so, as I mentioned to you, we reach out to the three states. We are willing to reach out to other states in our region, they just don't have any dual-language programs, but we're actually called Northeast in the hopes that will influence others as well. So we support, as I mentioned to you, all bilingual and dual-language programs. That includes transitional bilingual education as well. So our organization, do they speak English?
Yeah, yeah, they have.
Oh, yeah, okay. I didn't realize that. We run four very particular events every year. We have a dual-language special education network, which actually members of your community attend our sessions. And they bring together special educators who are involved in all kinds of programming to discuss the issues that they have around English language learners in special education. We have a dual-language leadership network, which meets twice a year as well, and it's specifically for leaders and teacher leaders, principals, assistant principals, directors of programming for issues around policy and leadership topics for dual-language programs. Making Connections, this is our annual conference that we run every year. This is our seventh year. This year it will be in Somerville at the East Somerville Community School. They have a dual-language program there called Unidos. And we will be bringing Thomas and Collier, Drs. Thomas and Collier, our researchers that I will be referencing in a little while. I know Mike is coming to our conference, so that's a really positive thing. This year, we're also running a symposium the day before to take advantage of the fact that we just passed the Look Act. And we have these researchers coming. We're bringing together districts who have dual-language programs, districts who are just starting dual-language programs, and districts who don't have them but really could have them because they have the right conditions for them. And then we run summer professional development trainings, usually they're one or two days. It's the third week of August. We're trying to expand our menu of professional development topics, and they are exclusive to dual-language programs, not to any other type of programs. So that's a uniqueness that we offer. And then, of course, our consulting services is including what we're doing with you, helping you get started. We call that program exploration. And then we have La Siembra, El Enfica Se, they're two-day program retreats for either getting going with opening the door or doing your own self-assessment about your program. We do also do a lot of professional development, depending on where you're at and what you need. We tailor it pretty much to your needs, for anybody's needs who asks us for support. And we have a nice cadre of retired dual-language teachers who love doing this work. Okay. So, English as a second language. So I am taking this information from a report by the federal government a few years back, and I found that they really explained beautifully about English approaches versus bilingual approaches. So in English approaches, or ESL approaches, the instruction is always in English, and the goals are always to learn English. And so one of the things that we need to understand is that under this type of program or this type of approach, you typically have a very heterogeneous student population. And I have a list that Mike gave me that you have 21 other languages besides Spanish in your district. So this would be an example of a program that would be needed because there are so many languages in your community. What differs in this program also is who are the teachers. And in our state, we will have sheltered English emergent programs, so those are teachers who have that endorsement, who teach those students from those 21 other languages that you are, that are in your community. Of course, another aspect of this program is ESL instruction. So these are other types of programs that fit under this umbrella of English approaches. Some schools have newcomers programs, which are typically for the secondary level, kids who just arrived. I believe you've been getting kids from Puerto Rico, for example, that are just arriving. That might be an example of a newcomer program. And then SLIF programs are programs for those students typically in our area who have been undocumented, unaccompanied minors, who have been coming into our communities with very little schooling, if any, are pretty much typically at a grade one, two, or three level, and yet they're 16, 17, 18 years old. So it's very challenging, but their instruction is also English with the goal of learning English. So in bilingual approaches, we understand from research that when you learn in your first language, this language that you are most proficient in, that you have a solid understanding, it actually helps you to learning a second language. You're not understanding new concepts, you're just labeling concepts you are aware of and know and knowledgeable about in a different language. So we find that in communities that have homogeneous populations, and you in your community, 46% of your English language learners are Spanish, that's a nice concentrated homogeneous group for that one language. This would be an appropriate example. And we now understand that speakers who are coming from a different language can either be sequential learners or simultaneous learners. This has muddied the waters for our programming, but we are ready to address and support these students. So a sequential learner would be somebody who learns English for the first time, from the time they're born, and then maybe at five years old, they go to school and they're going to be learning Spanish. Versus a simultaneous learner, I'm a simultaneous speaker, I grew up in Puerto Rico, and we've, from the time I was born, English and Spanish were two languages that were part of my life. So that's the difference between a simultaneous and a sequential. There are actually different instructional practices that have to be thought about and to support these two different types of language learners. But there are things that are easily taught to teachers and easily to be implemented. These bilingual programs need fluent teachers of that language, of instruction, so you will need Spanish speakers. I know Mike has done an inventory, and we actually already have staff who are bilingual and who speak Spanish, so that's a very positive thing as well. And then for sustaining, for truly becoming bilingual, bilinguine, bicultural, ideally you want the program to start early, preschool, kindergarten, and go for six to seven years minimum. The best would be if they can go all the way through high school. There are mostly elementary programs in our state, but the longer a district has a program, the more likely they will, they are going into creating a secondary pathway. So dual-language programs are additive, and I say the word additive because this is different than transitional bilingual education, which is a subtractive program model. In transitional bilingual education, you are using the two languages at the beginning, but the goal is to learn English to move into an SCI classroom or general education classroom. So in dual-language, you stay learning the two languages. Even when you get reclassified as a former ELL, you still stay in the program, because the goal is to be balanced bilingual, balanced bilinguine, and bicultural. And so that's a very distinct difference between transitional bilingual ed, for example, the two types of dual-language approaches. There is another distinction between dual-language approaches, one-way versus two-way. In two-way programs, you typically have models of the two languages. Students who can model English proficiently, students who can model Spanish proficiently, and that's the way it was for many years. But with the increased simultaneous speakers that we have in our communities, now we have students who can either fit in one of three different buckets: English proficient, Spanish proficient, or bilingual. And it could be a wider range of bilingualism. So it could be that, you know, you're a little bit speaking English and a lot Spanish, or the complete opposite, a little bit speaking Spanish and a lot English, but you're part of that bilingual spectrum. The one-way programs traditionally were for English speakers who wanted to learn a second language. Maynard is an example of, I think, did you go through that name?
No, but I've spoken through that.
Okay, Maynard's an example of a district. Milis is another example of a district. Mendon Upton are examples of districts who have one-way immersion programs. But one-way immersion programs also work for, like, all Latino students or all Spanish-speaking students who may be only Spanish-speaking, but also part of that bilingual continuum. So what's the distinction between one-way and two-way is that you need to bring in the models of proficiency of that language that they are not, the second language that they're learning, to that classroom, to that school environment. You need to bring that culture that's not there to that learning environment. So that's really kind of the difference between one-way and two-way. It is getting murkier as we proceed, as we, our demographics keeps changing, and I can say that probably in about five years, I'm not even going to bring this light out anymore. But we're there, not there yet. So again, the program goals of a dual-language program is for all students to be at or above grade level, to become bilingual and bilinguine by developing high levels of academic proficiency in the first language and in the second language. And that academic proficiency is a uniqueness about dual-language as well, because the students will be learning the two languages, will be learning all content in two languages. And then, of course, to demonstrate positive cross-cultural attitudes and behaviors, what we would call cross-cultural proficiency. There are a couple of non-negotiables, things that we absolutely say are required if you're going to run this program, if you're going to implement it with fidelity. One is that by the time students get to third grade, 50%, third or fourth grade, 50% of their time has to be in each language. So you can get there eventually. So you can start in kindergarten, first grade, for example, in an 80/20, or 90/10, or 70/30 model, and I'll explain that in a few minutes. Or you can start right from the get-go, that half of their time is in English and half of their time is in Spanish. That there are separate spaces for language, for learning the languages. In the world that I grew up in Puerto Rico, we speak back and forth, Spanish, English, like it's nothing, you know? In fact, you might get dizzy paying attention to the way we talk. But to learn the language, to learn the language, to learn the academics, it's important that you have that special time where you are only in that language, and you don't go back and forth unless it's explicitly part of a lesson. And that we do have, we call that bridging, where we make connections from one language to the other about the content that we're teaching, but it's for a purpose, for an explicit purpose for teaching language. And then, again, as I mentioned before, the longer, the better. Six, seven years is highly recommended, but if you can get through secondary level, that's the best. And there's very creative ways that districts are adding the pathway to secondary level by thinking about world language and combining with them, even thinking about local universities and having students go to take classes at the local universities. So advantages for English speakers, so native English speakers, you know, probably one of the biggest advantages that a lot of families like is an economic foot-up, you know? When you can speak two languages, we think that we can get jobs really easily. Well, I got this job because I speak two languages, you know? Now, all my children are bilingual, and their jobs all use two languages. So maybe that's very true for a lot of people. But it does build positive attitudes about the world around us and the diversity that we have. And if it's part of your heritage, but you've lost it over the generations, you know, it brings that back as well. For native speakers, we are finding that they achieve the same or higher levels in English than their peers who are enrolled in other types of programs. They also develop a positive self-identity. They're in schools now where Spanish is being spoken. Wow, that's unusual. I mean, there are times in the past where kids have been told, don't use your Spanish language, don't use your French language, and made to feel bad. But now, this is a school that has it. Both languages are being spoken, all cultures are being shared and introduced and talked about, and so that does tremendous amounts for your identity, for your self-esteem. And then the last bullet is for even communicating with your families. You know some of your families have parents that don't speak a word of English, it's taking them a little while to learn English. If the children cannot continue to communicate with their families, that brings lots of other troubles later on down the road in their lives. So the research is saying that students in dual-language programs are the only ones who could reach the 50 percentile in both their first and second languages in all subjects and maintain a high level throughout the, to do this, you need to maintain this level throughout the schooling. This is research from Thomas and Collier. They've actually been doing research for over 30 years, and it keeps coming out the same thing. and it keeps coming out the same thing over and over again, this positive look. This is an example of, of a graph, a visual graph. So, the bottom lines, this is related to what happened to them. We have question two, they have proposition two, two, two-seven? Yeah, so, this was exactly what happened to them and it's actually a Massachusetts story as well. Because it basically shows us that the highest bar, the colors are not coming out very well, but the highest bar is two-way, the next level is one-way. When students can start in first grade and go through eleventh and twelfth grade and sustain that dual-language experience, they are above the fiftieth percentile for academics. And this is specifically to a reading, English reading assessment. And it shows how other types of programs, transitional bilingual ed or ESL, I don't think SEI existed at the time of this study, that, again, the students are doing better when they're in a long-term dual-language program. So, this is, again, they recently did study in North Carolina, in the entire state of North Carolina. They chose to make it a policy. Other states are doing that as well, not Massachusetts, but other states like Oregon, Colorado, Delaware, there, Minnesota, are actually creating policies where the state is moving towards this dual-language approach. And what they're basically finding is that it doesn't matter what subgroup, all students who are in dual-language programs do better. So, here's just two little graphs that I want to share with you. This is for limited English proficient students, how we define it in English language learners for the federal government. The red and green, so red is the students were in the program, in a dual-language program, and the green is they were not. So, when they were in a dual-language program, they always performed better in reading and in math. And this is a graph for special needs students, because I know this is a concern, that when special needs students are in these programs, once again, they do better when they're in the program as compared to when they're not in the program. So, this is a good example for helping you to understand that special needs students can also be enrolled in dual-language programs. These are some of the features that will happen. I mentioned the, the program goals. It's an additive approach to learning. There are no legal restrictions in Massachusetts. There are no, there's a no need for parental waivers. The programs I told you enroll, typically, we want you to enroll English learners. Sometimes, it's only English learners, but more, most of the programs have a combination of English learners as well as non-English learners, or not speaking, students who speak English and want to learn the language. And I mentioned earlier to you about that, those three different buckets. So, here's an example of what I meant by that bilingualism. This is a tool that's used by some districts to identify where in that bilingual bucket you might be. So, on one side is students who speak only English and no Spanish. On the complete opposite side is students who speak Spanish and no English. And in the middle, you can see there's all these different combinations that might happen. And it actually might be what goes on in your community. So, we have now a tool that we can identify where you actually fit in the continuum, and it's the parents who tell us what they think. Because they know, but, you know, if you're bringing in four, four and five-year-olds, they are the ones who would know best. The duration of the program, as I mentioned to you, ideally to start in kindergarten or preschool and then extend it for five or six years. This is an, this didn't come out very well, but this is an example of a graph that I wanted to share with you, because what this shows you is different grades on one side, the native speaker, and then the second language learner. And you will see that at the beginning, it takes, the students will take a year and a half of language learning at, in the early stages. So, they, they have to learn fast and they have to learn a lot. And in the early stages, fortunately, there's a lot less depth, content, condensed content. It's more social language to begin with in kindergarten and then basic foundational skills. But, once you get into third and fourth grade, the, the content, content of what academics gets much more denser. But you can see that by the time the students are in eighth grade, they're actually catching up and they're making gains equal to students who are exactly their age. So, what this is basically saying, that these second language learners have a lot of work to do, but when they're in this program, they get there. There's such a strong focus on language development. This is general education curriculum. People wonder, "Are you following the standards?" We are following the curriculum standards just like any other general education classroom. It is not a unique program that doesn't take care of that. We've mentioned before, about fifty percent of the instruction should be in the two different languages eventually, by, definitely by third or fourth grade. And then, this language distribution, that it can be divided by subject, time, or teacher. So, this is a little bit complex, but I'm going to show you a couple of slides of what I mean. So, here's an example of a slide where social studies, language arts, and math are taught in Spanish in the morning, in one, one part of the day. And then, in the afternoon, the specials are, go back and forth. The science and language arts, and only English language arts is in the afternoon, the very end of the afternoon. So, this is what, what we would call an eighty-twenty model. It's typically done in K-one and two. If you do this, you can see that you're focusing on literacy in the child's, in the Spanish language more predominantly than in English. The only English they get is that little bit at the very end of the day. But they may have gym music and art, for example, in, in those, in English. But primarily, it's heavy, what we would call a heavy lifting in the partner language purposefully in those early stages. Versus this model, which is a fifty-fifty, where the morning might be social studies and language arts and math in Spanish, but in the afternoon, specials and science and English language arts are in the, in English. So, in this case, they'll never get Spanish, science in Spanish. They'll never get social studies in English, because it's by subject matter that is being taught. So, that's why when I said time, subject matter, so the first one was time, this one's about subject matter. And in some cases, by teacher, you will have to hire a group of teachers to teach this program. You might not find a teacher who can teach science in Spanish. So, you choose to do it off of that course in English. But as long as the rest of the balance of the day is evenly matched, you're okay. And maybe that's what it is for first grade, but in second grade, you find a teacher who can teach science, and then you switch and do science in second grade in Spanish. So, there's a lot of things, nuances that have, that have to happen. This is an example of instructional strategies that go on at the beginning. The bridge is something that I mentioned. Academic conversations is an integral part. So, children are conversing with each other and we're teaching them how to speak in academic ways of speaking, because that's what they're going to be talking about, the content. That's a traditional, a new, relatively new instructional practice that has been emerging, came out of dual-language, but it's actually coming around from even to general education, this idea of this discourse style that has to include an academic way of speaking with very precise words. The last point is the student integration. And the idea about student integration is that, remember, I mentioned that you would have to have population, the different populations, the different languages, the different culture groups. So, that happens at the classroom level, where you're bringing in the different cultures to the students and making sure that they understand each other's language and culture, but then even know how to behave in those cultures. So, when you're bicultural, and I go back home, I know to take my time and not worry that I'm going to be late, because nobody ever starts on time, but here I am on time, as an example, you know. So, those are the types of things that are actually taught in the classroom. So, here are considerations. You are already doing this. From the report that I, I heard you'd had last month, these are the questions that you have been already thinking about. So, you're ahead of the game. I'm not coming in from the very, very beginning. I'm coming in from a midpoint here. So, I just wrote it down, because I know these answers are things that we already have, that you already have heard, and Mike has ready for you if you want to go through it again. These are examples of the things that a leadership team will need to start working on. And I reference some of this when I share with you those different schedules. Again, here's a very broad, you know, do you want to do English-Spanish right from the beginning, from kindergarten through eighth grade? Do you want to consider ninety-ten or eighty-twenty, any of those combinations? But you can see even in this graph, by a certain point in time, students are getting half their time in English and half their time in Spanish. So, you need to think about this and, and those are the things that we would help you plan and figure out to open up those doors. And we do this through a two-day retreat called La Siembra. We have been trained by Dual Language Education in Mexico. This is their intellectual property. And so, we have been, we are the only ones in the country trained outside of them to offer this two-day program. And so, this is a way that we help you get started with making those plans. It's around, organized around the Dual Language Program Planner, which was developed by Liz Howard at UConn, and we still have a wonderful relationship with her. You will leave this two-day retreat with plans, action plans, language allocation plans, curriculum plans, so that when you, ideally, you want to take another full year to, so let's say this summer, we would have the La Siembra, and then you would take the full year for the leadership to really figure out the logistics of all those different details, so that when you open the door in September twenty nineteen, you will be ready, absolutely ready, for running this program. So, these are the tools that we use. The Guiding Principles for Dual Language Education just got revised, and Mike just told me that he talked to somebody from Pennsylvania who said, Virginia, who said it's become their bible and it will become your bible. Cal, which is a center of applied linguistics, has lots of practitioner briefs and research reviews that are very helpful to us. I just mentioned the program planner. MABE was the author of, one of the only states who has a guidance document for implementing two-way immersion programs and which we're going to change to dual-language now that we changed the look at. And from this document, we have developed many readiness and decision-making tools to help districts get started and open their doors. So, that's my presentation and I'm willing to hear any questions from you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. This is really, it's really enjoyable to have such a positive pick-up before us. It's really exciting. So, I, I think what I'd like to do is, we have quite a lot of people in the audience, which is wonderful. I think I'm going to start by opening it up to community members. And, you know, if that sort of tapers off a little, I'm going to open it up to the committee, but I'm going to welcome community members. If something pops into your head that you'd like to, you know, contribute or ask, please, you know, put your hand up and we'll sort of allow it to be kind of fluid. So, anybody have any thoughts, questions? Yes, please come up to the, and, and people do need to come up to the microphone, just because then Amherst Media can hear what you're saying. So, don't be shy, it's okay, we all have to do it.
Hi, my name's Laura.
Yeah, I was going to say, introduce yourself, but you're already.
My name's Laura, I go to Amherst, I'm a sophomore. And I had a few questions about the dual-language program. One of the questions was about how much input is coming from ELL families and students in terms of the formation of this program. And I'm also sort of wondering how a program like this would impact the current ELL programs that go on in the public schools. I had the opportunity to talk to somebody, he was a former ELL student at Amherst Regional High School, and she had a lot of grievances about how she wished there was more administ, more administration or more teachers helping with the transition between ELL students to the mainstream classes, which she struggled with, and also the social isolation that she described between ELL students and mainstream classes. And I was, or mainstream students, rather. And I was wondering if you could maybe speak to that.
So, I won't speak to the first part, because that's an answer that I can't offer you, but I'll speak to the very last part, or to the last two parts. The law currently still requires sheltered English immersion to be a program of choice for districts who have English language learners. In addition, they can choose a dual-language or transitional bilingual ed program. So, that doesn't change the services for English learners currently in our districts. What your, what your friend experienced is what hopefully would be avoided by having a dual-language program. Because in a dual-language program, there'll be others who speak the language that she, if she was a Spanish speaker, who speaks Spanish, who culturally behave in the different Spanish cultural ways. And, and the goal is that, that they don't have to actually stop speaking the Spanish. They will continue learning their Spanish while they're learning English and all the different content. So, I referenced a particular slide that talks about self-esteem and identity. All that would be something that she would not face, because there are people all around her who are just like her. And, and that's a huge impact for, a positive impact for why you would want a dual-language program.
I can definitely answer the first one. I think the quick answer is, we haven't, I haven't proposed anything to the school committee yet, so, but a more complex answer, which I think is one I want to offer, is I know that the subgroup that worked on this and presented at the last meeting definitely did reach out and had an event for ELL families to try to gather input on their, you know, their work. And if it is something that we want to suggest going forward to the school committee to explore, that we certainly would want to have wide representation on a group. And I know the La Siembra oftentimes can include not just teachers or administrators, but also families and community members who want to have input. Because I think what I heard in your question was perhaps a suggestion that that would be wise, and I agree with that suggestion.
It is actually one of the, one of the outcomes of the La Siembra retreat that I share with you is to develop a communication plan to start reaching out to the community, inform them about what this is, and get them to be comfortable with the concept and get ready for the possibility of the implementation.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I, I just, as, as a member of the dual-language subgroup, that was certainly a part of our community outreach that we recognized was challenging. We'd certainly need, you know, were we to go forward with this, some, you know, real professional expertise on how to make sure that that was a really, you know, voice that was really heard.
So, I'm just going to introduce Berta Elena Rojas, who is recently from the Worcester Public Schools. And actually, her specialty is parent engagement. So, I don't know if you want to make a reference to parent outreach, or did I put you on the spot?
No, that's okay.
Did you just, yeah, either, or you could sit right there if you want to just talk into the, just join us, that'd be great.
She's a MABE board member, has come to observe me.
To support.
Support me too.
To support our organization.
Yes.
So, just briefly, first of all, I really, this is weird, so I'm just going to do this, because I really want to see you. I really like your question, because any question that comes up about families and parent income, parent input, I love that. So, I just have a couple of comments, because I have a lot of experience with dual-language program implementation from the Worcester Public Schools. And the programs that we have there are programs that started fifty-fifty from kindergarten, and we were able to bring them all the way into the sixth grade, and next year, they're going into the middle school. So, from the parents of English language learners, the input that we receive is the parents cannot have enough of these programs. They want more. They want the districts to have more capacity, because the parents experience that when districts have these type of programs, it validates them, it validates their culture, it validates their language. It normalizes the environment in a way that it promotes cultural competency for everyone. So, it creates a climate that is more conducive to equity and inclusion, and everybody benefits from that. And then, they also like it, because they feel that they are better able to support their kids with their education, because they can support their kids in their own language. If the parents do not know English, it's harder to do that. So, so it brings that added benefit in terms of the parents being able to show their support of education and engagement in a way that is going to be recognized by the American way of education, which sometimes they can't when they don't speak English. From the Anglo-parents or the parents of multilingual, speaking English students that commit themselves to the dual-language program, which, you know, many of them are very brave to do that, because it, a lot of parents do not know what's going to happen. There is a lot of anxiety initially, precisely, because they are not going to be able to help their, their kids with the Spanish homework. So, we do get, you get a lot of concerns initially, when the kids are little, in regards to what's happening. "I don't know what's happening, you need to communicate better with me, because the homework that you're sending, I don't understand the homework." A lot of homework at the beginning is in Spanish, because the, the kids who are English-speaking need to practice the. need to practice the Spanish, so they're not being sent home with a lot of English homework. And the parents get that feeling, which is the same feeling that English, the parents of English learners get every day, you know, which is like, how do I help, you know, my kid with homework? So, so that actually creates also, you know, a stance of reflection and, and equity, you know, in the community at large. And then the parents also, because usually the programs move their students in a cohort, so you would be amazed of the community that gets created by the parents who participate. The parents are very committed, because they believe at their core that becoming bilingual is such a valuable contribution to their child's life, is such an investment for the future. They all have that in common, so they actually create very tight relationships among the parents, and they end up being active parents and very participatory parents, because they support each other and they end up, you know, having that added benefit as well. So hopefully that addresses a little bit more the, you know, the, the input. I, I wouldn't know how would you get input, but in terms of the experience that we have with input from parents, this gives you a little bit more information about that.
Thank you so much. Other thoughts from the, let's come on up?
Hi, my name is Ellen Lindsay, and I'm a parent of an eighth grader, and I wish you were doing this ten years ago. So as Mike knows, we had conversations on this, makes sense, ten years ago. Anyway, my question is, how many cohorts do you see as ideal for starting off? And then what about attrition? And are there any entry points for kids moving into the district or who want to be part of the program?
Well, we always recommend at least two cohorts, because there is attrition. I mean, there are children who move away from the community. There are children who sometimes parents feel, I, it's just too much for them, and so they pull them out, because they worry, you know, and they, they're just not ready to hang in there long enough. There are, and students with special needs, you know, we, while we say they are all welcome and they are all able to learn, they are, there may be certain circumstances that it might just be too much for that child, and then the families decide to prioritize this instead of that. And that's, that's the prerogative, you know, that's an individual case by case, but all special needs students can be enrolled in the program. All special needs students are enrolled in general education classrooms, so it's, it's the same kind of thinking. So we do find that, that it diminishes, some kids leave, and so we start with, if you start with at least two cohorts, you will be guaranteed that one cohort by the end. Some schools like three cohorts, so that they can have two cohorts by the end. And those schools that are now having that pathway all the way through high school are not losing as many kids, because they can have kids enter at different points in time. And that's becoming much more acceptable practice than it was maybe even five years ago. So for example, if you had a lot of students who came from Puerto Rico and were in third grade, and they were not from San Juan, but from other places of the, because in San Juan, I went to school where the English wasn't a language of instruction, but where the language of instruction was from, was Spanish, they'd be a perfect model and could enter in third grade, because they probably have been exposed, you know, in Puerto Rico, to English anyways, and so they can go right into the pathway. So again, the acceptance of kids at different places depends on a lot of information about that individual, but it's possible, absolutely.
Hi, my name's Carrie Spitzer. I'm very excited to see that we're considering this. I was just wondering, you know, Mike is at Wildwood, and we have lots of non-English and non-Spanish speakers, so what's the experience like? Or is it even an option for kids who are-
Non-Spanish and non-English?
Exactly, thank you.
Sure. We actually have students who are in dual language programs, Spanish-English programs, who don't speak English and who don't speak Spanish. Yeah, absolutely. And so is that viable for them? Absolutely. Is it harder? Yes. Will it be, the teacher then has to pay attention to that, because this child could experience language fatigue in a different way than the other kids. When you are speakier, a speaker of Spanish and English is your language that you're learning, it gets exhausting. But remember, half the day is in Spanish, so I can relax and be in the language that's comfortable for me. But for those kids who speak a third, this will be a third and fourth language, it's a lot of work cognitively, but it's possible, as long as we plan for instruction that allows them those spaces and gives them what we call comprehensible input, you know, lots of visuals and gestures and ways that they can understand without having language dependence.
I could just add to that, just briefly, one of the things that I referenced earlier, and I'll speak a little more of this in a couple weeks when we come back. The Massachusetts, the schools that are involved right now in dual language, some of them are, one of them in particular is a pretty good match for us, but a lot of them, as, as you mentioned, are either primarily monolingual, or overwhelmingly monolingual populations, Maynard, Mendonupton, or the-
Those are actually, there are fewer of those than we are, the two-way.
Oh, yeah, right. Or situations that are urban settings like Boston, Holyoke, where a higher percentage of students speak Spanish, you know, the number of forty-six percent, right, Worcester, exactly. And so I've reached out, and that's what we're referencing earlier, to our MSAN partners. MSAN is Minority Student Achievement Network, and significant number of MSAN, or MSAN partner districts have much more language, I don't know the right way to say this. The range of languages spoken and the percentage of their ELL students match ours a little more than the Massachusetts, the typical schools in Massachusetts. And so I've been getting good information from them, including this morning, like I mentioned, Harrisonburg, Virginia is another district I spoke to this morning. It's not exactly the same demographics, but their language diversity in terms of non-English first language is much more similar to ours than some of the other districts in Massachusetts. So some of the work that I've been doing, as this work's been going on, has been contacting many districts and trying to find districts that are pretty good matches for us and how they manage issues that you described, because it's a little different than, than most of the district's matches, if you fall in sort of one camp or the other on that, and we're sort of more in the middle.
But it, like, I'm, I am very familiar with the Barbarian School in Framingham, because it happens to be where my daughter is a teacher, and one of her students comes from a Portuguese-speaking family, but it's a Spanish-English program, so, and she's doing fine. She's trilingual. Wonderful, isn't it? Having more languages, so. Other questions?
And please feel free to raise your hand if you have other thoughts as we go along. Cuny?
Yeah. Thank you very much for coming tonight. I really appreciate this. I just, I had one quick follow-up on the, the question that was asked previously by a community member about transferring in like third, fourth, or fifth grade. And I just think it would be really important to understand, you know, in our case, we do have a lot of students that come in, a lot of families that come in, maybe for a year or two before moving on to other communities, you know, a lot of professors and, you know, dynamic environment, right? And so if they would be coming into a school that is a dual language program, and they are coming in the middle of their elementary school career, it would be really important, I think, for us to understand what kind of impact that would have-
Yeah.
... and how they might be able to transition out again afterwards. So I think we just need to follow up on that.
Yeah.
But the question that I really wanted to ask you, that I had raised actually at our last meeting, that we had this, this topic, was, you know, it's, it's great that we have fluent Spanish speakers that are in our district currently that are teaching. However, as a, as a Spanish speaker myself, I understand there's a difference between teaching Spanish and speaking Spanish, right? And so I wouldn't pretend as a person who's a fluent Spanish speaker to be able to stand in front of a classroom and instruct in Spanish. So I'm wondering if you can illuminate us a little bit on what kinds of certifications or professional development would be required to bring a fluent Spanish speaker up to a level of being able to teach? Because I don't want to assume that all of our fluent Spanish speakers or educators in the district are prepared to be teachers in both languages.
Yeah. No, that's a, that's a really good question, actually. And it's, it's an issue, because, just because you're bilingual doesn't mean you can work in this type of program. Our state, right now, has no license for dual language programs. But with the Look Act, we are required to create a dual language educator endorsement, which will be in place beginning in June. The Board of Education will be voting on it in June of this coming year for implementation beginning the next school year. So it's an endorsement, so they would re-require, teachers be required to have like their elementary certification or if their secondary, you know, their math certification, and on top of that, the endorsement, the dual language educator endorsement. The SEI endorsement, which exists already for our state, would be a requirement for administrators, because that's part of the Department of Justice Settlement Agreement, of administrators who work in this program. So what typically happens for the current programs is they look for teachers who have an ESL background or a world language background. Occasionally, you get somebody from out of state with a bilingual license from a different state. It is, it is, and even when you have a world language teacher who works in this program, it's an adjustment for them as well, because world language teachers are really good at teaching the language, but they don't come from teaching science in that language, or math in that language, or social studies in that language. They're just teaching the language. So it's also an adjustment for them. So that's one of the reasons why we have the Summer Institute, where we offer professional development that's unique to this. There are, I know that UMass Amherst is actually thinking about changing their teacher preparation program to reflect the needs for, now that we have the Look Act and the dual language educator endorsement, positive for you, because they're right in your back door. And one of the things that we have found that's really helpful is to develop relationships with the local university, in addition to us, of course, but to do the research in the classroom, to do the actual mentoring of teachers and, and teaching of, of the strategies that are unique to the, to the program. Because there are some very distinct strategies for this program model that do not exist in other programs. So that would be something, so what we've learned is that until we have teacher preparation programs in our state, and we have not because of what happened in two thousand and two, we have to grow our teachers. And we do that by providing the professional development internally, like you do on other topics, but for also reaching out to us and local universities.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
So I just want to thank you again for, for coming here. I just, you know, this, this theme came up in the presentation from the enrollment working group, and you were talking about the positive sense of identity and the empathy and the, it's just, it, it warms your heart, you know, I mean, particularly in this national climate, you know, where native Spanish speakers are, so, enough said on that. So that being said, you know, there's a lot of excitement and enthusiasm in our community for this, and, you know, having just talked about one aspect where we want to be careful about having well-qualified instructors, you know, one, one of my concerns would be the, of going too fast too soon, you know, there's so much energy and enthusiasm to want to embrace it, that you don't want to, you know, trip over yourself for the beginning. So if you can maybe talk about what kind of guidance-
Yep.
... you would give a, a district just starting out, you know, pitfalls to avoid.
We actually have a timeline that we suggest, and we suggest that you take the two years to plan, to really think about a lot of things before you open the door. And then when you, you need to also realize that when you're opening the door, you're opening one grade at a time. So each year, you add another grade. So we suggest you start with kindergarten, and then add first grade, and then add second grade. Another district nearby did not listen to us and decided to open kindergarten first grade, and now are saying to us, oh, we should have listened to you. So it, it's a slow rollout process, purposefully, to help you. And we do suggest that you take at least a year and a half to plan it, and you're right on target if you wait till September twenty nineteen to open up your doors. So that, that is another really important point to make. So we do have a timeline with activities that we share with you that you should be doing in September, in the fall, winter, and spring, summer, you know, for the next couple of years that you can follow. But the rolling out slowly and thoughtfully is critical, because we don't want you to fail. We want you to succeed, and we want you to do it right from the beginning. We don't want that expression about flying the airplane and building it at the same time. No. And if you do that, we may say, we're not going to help you. Because we want you to succeed. We do believe in the program, and, and if we're going to make an impact even in our own state about the value of, of language programs and multilingualism and multiculturalism, then we need to do it correctly in the first place. That's a good question.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I'll echo what everyone else said. I mean, this is wonderful, because I thought the, the enrollment working group that our chair was on was, was just, it was so informative and so helpful, but then to follow up with this is just really fantastic. But I was wondering, and it was sort of building off of Mr. Demling's question, when districts that have been successful, is, if you have multiple elementary schools in a district, do you primarily focus on one school? Do you have more than one school that does this, or is it done district-wide at the elementary level?
Yeah. It's another great question. Since you're just embarking it from the first, for the first time, I recommend just one building at a time. We find that there's a lot of logistical issues. Holyoke is an example of a district who started a program a few years ago, and already are opening a second building and want, have plans for a third building. So they have asked us to help them this year, because they realized they went a little too fast. And they have buildings who are at different places and understanding about the implementation of the program, and so we've been bringing, we've actually had two professional development days with them already, to bring all of them back together and say, let's get back to the basics. What are the basics? I think we're starting to veer off, and, because the implementation is difficult when there is no one person at the district level, at a leadership level, who could really pay attention to all the details. So that's another recommendation, to be helpful, to be thoughtful, is to identify a point person that will be paying attention to the implementation of the program, and then as they develop the expertise and the experience, it'll be easier to open up in other buildings. The school districts that have multiple buildings, they have had these programs twenty-five years.
Wow.
So it's a big difference opening a program when you've had one for twenty-five years in a new building, and even in a new language like Framingham. It's now going to be opening up a Portuguese-English program for the first time after thirty years of a Spanish-English program. Their demographics have changed, so they have a lot of Portuguese speakers now, but the difference to open up the door is vastly different.
When you talk about a cohort, how many students is-
So what, what do you typically have in your classrooms? Twenty-five students? Twenty-
Twenty.
Twenty-two students? So it would be to, a cohort of whatever your typical class size is, twenty-two, twenty-two?
And I heard you use the, the term partner language?
Yes.
Is there, so-
So we use that language for, the partner is, if you're doing a Spanish-English program, your partner language is Spanish. So from the, from the one perspective, or it could be actually English. So the idea is that there's a partner, it's not, we don't want to use the word target, we want to use the word partner, because that shows equal balance between the two languages. And something that we're always paying attention to, which Berta Elena referenced with, is this equity, this power differential between languages. English is very powerful in our, in our state, in our region, in our communities, so we have to elevate the power of Spanish. And one way of doing it is by saying it's a partner to English, right?
Would there be a term for English that's equivalent to partner, like in terms of-
So we would call them partner languages, so they're, you know-
So both would be?
It's right.
All right. Thank you.
So one, what, did you want to have something?
I didn't know if you had another-
Oh, did you have a question?
Honestly, I was just going to express a profound enthusiasm that Framingham is launching Portuguese.
Yeah. So am I.
I know you know about this, but anyone who follows Framingham over the last, I don't know what, ten or fifteen years, maybe twenty years?
They've had, they've had a program almost thirty years now.
Well, no, I'm, I was going to say that they have, there's, there's been a growing-
Portuguese community.
Portuguese community in Framingham, and there's been, look over the last, I don't know, twenty years, times in which the community has not always been welcomed, and in fact, oftentimes the public discourse has been unkind. And so to see the community embrace the Portuguese community and put this on this kind of level and approach is just really wonderful. Nice, nice to hear.
They are thinking about equity, and that's, that's where it came from, conversations around equity.
The other interesting thing about Framingham, is that Framingham is one of the few districts, and for years they have done this, that makes the commitment to do dual language from preschool. So they, they actually start with bilingual, with dual language preschool, which you don't see very often-
Yeah.
-but they actually do that.
Scan the, scan the audience. Yes.
I can defer to you if you-
No, I mean, I have a few questions, but they can wait.
I defer to you. I defer to you.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So a couple of questions. One, you know, as, as doing our research, there was a lot of talk about what the percentage of your native target language, or partner language, or whatever you want to be, say, for each should be ideally. And I, I know that you talked to Dr. Morris about this, as somebody said, but could you talk about that a little bit? Because it's, it's a little unclear as you do, as you read, and what is necessary to get these kind of, you know, results that the research shows.
So the, the more contemporary approach is a third, a third, a third. If you're going to make sure that you are including English speakers who want to learn the partner language, or Spanish speakers who want to learn the partner language of English, if you're thinking about that, in the, in the past, even 10 years ago, it was a strict, half the students had to be Spanish speakers, and the other half had to be English speakers. But because we have so many simultaneous speakers in our communities, learning the two lang, they're coming, learning, already speaking the two languages from the beginning, maybe not to the same balanced level of proficiency, but some level of bilingualism, we have to think about that group. We couldn't exclude them. And so, and really what they can do is, what they, they're just a little bit ahead of the curve in, in some ways, but the goal is still to get them to be that balanced bilingual, to be equally proficient in the two languages. So they still have a lot to learn as well. So because of the change in demographics, we now say a third of Spanish speakers, a third of English speakers, and a third of these bilingual speakers. So that you have models of the two languages and models of the two cultures in different ways, coming together to learn the two languages.
So, you know, while our community is, has a significantly, you know, it's grown significantly in terms of our, our ELL Spanish speakers, you know, I don't think that we're going to be at a third, but...
Oh, Spanish speakers.
Right, right. I mean, is that a concern?
No.
As you come into this, yeah?
So, so that, that's why, remember I had the slide about one way, went two-way, and then said about five years, and we're not, not going to show that slide anymore? It's exactly why.
Okay, yeah.
Because there are some communities that are not quite at the third, a third, a third bucket, but that's okay. We are learning that it's okay, we just have to do a few things differently. We would have to pay attention to bringing in more models of Spanish speakers, more of the cul, of that cul, Spanish culture. We would have to maybe create that 80/20 model to start, to do heavy lifting in Spanish, because there are so few Spanish models, and then switch into the 50/50. And that could be a conscious choice, because you understand that about your demographics.
Right, right, okay. I, I was able to go and visit the, the Metcalf School in, in Holyoke, so I was, had the opportunity to speak with the principal there. And we were talking about, you know, just the, the strength of the bicultural, bi-literacy piece, and, you know, we said, well, what, you know, and she, about how much that infused the entire building. And I'm, I'm interested if you have models where maybe it's just a strand within a school, and how, because she was saying, "I, I would be concerned about how that would affect the ability of the whole community to sort of embrace the culture."
Most, most programs start as a strand within a school.
Okay.
I say 100% start with a strand within a school. Very few start as a whole school. But eventually, over time, so like Barbary started as a strand, and after about 15, 18 years, then they moved into a whole school. So it takes a little bit of time, because you're building the program, and you have to convince the community that the whole school warrants it. A caution that I would say is that you really want to make sure that even if it's a strand within the school, that the school embrace the program, and that the whole school looks like a dual-language program, even though half the students are not in the program. Because more often it's the other way around. And you're like, "There's a dual-language program in here? Where is it?" So you want it, the whole school to look that way, even though half of your students are in the program.
Right, right.
Because then you're really embracing the whole concept.
Yes, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I just had three, three quick comments. One is, I just want to thank Amherst College students for coming back. It's really neat. I think their project was done last time for coming once, so we appreciate that. Makes me very proud of my alma mater. The second thing to Mr. Doniz's point on staffing is, I think it's a really good point around the bilingual, and, and something that, you know, I'll speak a little more about perhaps at our next meeting, is that out of the staff, and I'm not saying all of them would be interested, or would do it, but a number of them have taught, been teachers in Spanish, whether it's in this country or in another country before. So we do look at both, when we did our analysis, who's bilingual, but also who is taught in Spanish. This is, to your point, are very different things. And the last thing, I just want to tell an anecdote that I don't have permission to say, so the person will be anonymous, it's not me. But just that, when, when you were talking about elevating Spanish in the culture, you know, so just someone I know very well, had the experience of being raised in a bilingual home and going to kindergarten screening, and, not Amherst. And they screened the student for whether they were needed ELL services. And what the person told me is they forgot their Spanish because they knew it was wrong. But no one had said, "It's wrong." No one said, you know, the teacher was trying to say, you know, "Speak to me in English, speak to me in Spanish," but there was, the kind of, just because of where it was located, the idea that English is the dominant language, and that must be the right answer, the right answer must be English. And so one of the things that excites me so much is, I mean, the academic piece, and obviously this group knows that I'm really interested in the data and academic achievement, but is really that other piece, around feeling of belonging, feeling of being honored, and the cultural aspects. I don't think you can under...
Excite that, am I right?
Absolutely. And I know it's just one anecdote, but it's, it's a really big anecdote in this person's life that at age five...
He knew it.
Yeah, and they didn't even know they knew it. Right? Like it was just, it was unconscious, it wasn't like deep thinking at age five, right? I mean, some people do that. It's not the way it was described to me. So just thinking about that, that change and that impact is just really tremendous.
There's a, a story, I'll tell an anecdote, a story. The principal at Barbary School was telling a story about how she's watching two children walking down the hall, arm in arm, and she was just enthralled because not only were they children from different cultures and language groups, but they were from different socioeconomic backgrounds. And they had no idea. They were just friends. And that, that's really what speaks to dual-language programming.
Does, does MABE help look at questions of transportation, and that sort of, you know, your whole community and how you might consider that, if that's a...
We haven't done that, but what, what we have developed is wonderful relationships, like with Berta Lina, with all those different districts that have dual-language programs. And we could always say, "This person is having trouble. Ah, I know, this, this prog, district also had this trouble, let me, let me connect you with each other." So that's probably our strength, is the fact that we have met, worked with almost everybody, and know their unique, their uniqueness, and can bring people together.
Yeah.
And in addition, I've found in my conversations, particularly with MSAN districts, because they're not only demographically similar, but they join MSAN our, our network because they're committed around social justice and those pieces, and a similar methodology and kind of philosophy that we have, that those conversations have been incredibly rich. And the other thing I'll note, and probably heard this in, in just even this experience, is I can't get people off the phone. Right? I'm like, you know, like it's hard, if everyone's really busy, as educators, and today the conversation was, I can't, I had one really specific question, and it was like, "But let me tell you about this that happened, you know, last week, because they didn't have full break, they only had like President's Day off." And, and, you know, so that level of enthusiasm in MSAN districts is, speaks volumes, because usually it's more often you're trying to chase down someone, you know, and someone said, "Here's my cellphone, call me anytime," and, you know, and, and that, that's not been my, everyone's wonderful in MSAN and other partner districts and wants to partner, but, you know, like, "Here's my cellphone, call me anytime." That's not language that I'm used to hearing, and from administrators in other districts. So I think there's, there's something about that piece there, and, and really, you know, what you shared continues to come up every place I speak to. So I think when we come back and march, I'll have a little more analysis of MSAN district and how they manage transportation, as well as Massachusetts social...
It just happened last week. One district person said, "I have to figure out how to do the, they're going to do a lottery. How do I do a lottery?" I said, "Well, let me hook you up with..." I emailed five minutes later, the person responded, "Yep, I can call you on Monday at such-and-so time." I'm like, "Whoa, that's incredible." And so that, that is enthusiasm that the field has, because there are so few of us.
Yeah.
Right. That's great, yeah.
Hi, my name's Michelle Speerko. My children are too old for this implementation, but I cannot express enough how enthusiastic I am about the direction that you guys are taking, and I'm so glad you're here. I have a logistical question around implementation. Everyone is sharing all this enthusiastic feedback, and you're talking about colleagues who can't, you know, won't hang up. So when you speak to a strand within a school, and not, you know, rolling it out too quickly, and making sure that the school community embraces that strand, my concern, seeing the enthusiasm in our community, is that everybody is going to want to be part of this from the very beginning.
That's the hardest part.
So what is your recommendation about how to manage that? Because I, I think it's just going to be so challenging, and so many people are going to be sad about not being able to be included in this. Because, I mean, this is just so perfect for our town.
It's true, that does happen, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yes, I think that's a great question. I, I mean, that, that does happen, but also from the perspective, from the community perspective, I would say it happens more than from within the school building and the district perspective, only because when you are within a district, you realize what it takes to bring any program to a good startup and a good implementation. It just takes so much, and everybody knows it, I mean, dual-language or any other type of program. So I think that the, the, the school community usually understands that it would be impossible to start with one school, the full school as dual-language. The issue of finding, the, you know, the, the teachers have to be so, so qualified is such an important part of the program, also because the collaboration that needs to take place between the teachers, especially if there are two teachers, if it is language-specific, which is a very effective way in my experience, especially for the earlier grades. A teacher that does the teaching in Spanish, and a teacher that does it in English, there has to be so much collaboration. So, so I, it, it, there is a lot of enthusiasm, but from within the school commu, community, people get excited, but they is, they know, they know that, that it's not possible to do a full school. So people just keep watching it, and if they want to be a part of it, you know, you begin to get emails, "Oh, whenever..." It gets to the second, like the second-grade teachers, if they're, whenever it's going to move into the second grade, you begin to get emails. Is it, "Consider me, because you know, I, I do this, I do that," you know? Or principals in the, around, in the district, if it is a district with different schools, and the data begins to show, although that takes a little bit of time, but it can happen actually as early as the third grade M-class, you can begin to see the kids in dual-language outperforming everybody. Like it doesn't matter L or, but we saw it as early as third grade. Fifth grade is almost sure. So like other principals are, see the data, and whenever, especially if you have like a good data tracking. So all the principals begin to ask about it, and, but it does take a lot of work, so it's not something that you could really just bring about that easily, and I think that people know that.
What other districts do is they have a lottery. And that's, that, you know, so that's where we're at in our state, because of what happened with question two, that we have to have a lottery. But we just changed the law. So I, it's not timely for you, but in 10 years' time, it will be a different place, and we won't have that question.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just had three things to share. So one, I was going to share my cautionary tale I shared with your group, if that's okay, because I think it's worth sharing.
Yes, yes, please do.
You know, so I was a town in New Jersey, and I, not that far from where I grew up, and they have not started their program. They had a full report done in 2015, and they can't answer the question that I perceive, you asked it much more pleasantly. But we know each other, so I, I feel like I can extrapolate that they can't resolve which school it should be in, and how to, who should go to it. And so now it's, it's, you know, they don't have anything planned for next year. It's four years later, and they haven't started. So it's a cautionary tale that, you know, using the experience of MABE, at some point, if we go forward with the recommendation, it's going to be at one grade level, at one school to start. And I hope that we're all, you know, understanding of that, and I think we'll continue to connect with MABE, because people are going to, I think you're right, people, the demand will be high. I think the second thing is, in some of my conversations, even at Somerville, where you're hosting the conference, when a program first starts, there's a lot of anxiety. Not that there is an enthusiasm for the concept, but it's, is my kid going to be okay learning Spanish for X amount of the day if I'm a monolingual speaker? And vice versa, if I'm a Spanish speaker, you know, I want my kid to learn English. Is this, is my student, is my child going to learn English? Because I know that that's a barrier in my life, and I don't want it to be in my child. So I do think, until programs get up and running, no matter how exciting they are, when you get rubber meets the road, I think some families, while they'll support the concept, will have, want to make sure like, it's up and running successfully before they place their five-year-old in a program. And, and I know, there's no judgment, there's no judgment in that. I think that's the reality of anything new. And I think the last thing I'll say is, you know, interesting talking to one MSAN district, which I'll reference a little more a couple of weeks from now, and they're, they have six elementary schools, and they're now up to, not Massachusetts, but they're up to four dual-language programs. And the only way they were able to pull it off is they partnered with their local university, which is in the same town. And they've partnered and built a program where they're spitting out teachers who can go right into it. And, and that has, the capacity piece is still a challenge for them, but it was so popular in their community. But the, the, the biggest problem is...
Teaching.
Yeah. Who can do that? And so they, they've worked with their local university teacher ed program to develop this pipeline in their state. And so, you know, the more I talk to people, the more we work with MABE, the more examples we see of the diversity right now, and how programs start, and where they go.
Yeah.
And so it just, I, I don't want to, I started with the cautionary tale first, so it didn't end with it, but I did want to mention it, because I think it's a very real concern that I think a lot about.
I could also add, you know, I didn't realize, I'm glad that you said that, because the perspective from the parents, right? There could be a lot of parents who want their child. So what I have seen happen in different places, in addition to a lottery, is, you know, an effort to do an informational open house. And from that open house, parents that are interested in their kids being part of the program, they complete the registration, and then those students go for a screening. And they would go, usually the screening is with the kindergarten teachers, because the, the most, the most typical entry point is every kindergarten year. And then the screening is an important screening for the student and for the parents, because then decisions sometimes could be made based upon the level of commitment from the parents. And that is sometimes an important variable, because of what you were saying, right? Like if parents would have an understanding that things are going to look a little ambiguous, not necessarily what they were expecting, and being able to tolerate that, and what level of supports do they have, and just so that you could be a little bit more proactive about preventing the attrition.
Yeah. And I, I feel like our group, as we sort of went through this, you know, the biggest fear that we'd have is that, you know, given, we have such a passionate community, so enthusiastic that we end up hogtying ourselves with our own enthusiasm, you know, which I think is a real, something we should really be aware of. And I sort of had this idea of like a bumper sticker in my mind that was like, "This is where we start." Like this is the start. That doesn't mean it's the end, but, you know, as, as we're talking about this, this is where we start, if, if we end up going forward with this.
Yeah, it's a very good point, that, because you're starting here, but you can add many other things. You could add a world language program, you can add a foreign language at the elementary school in a different building, which is another type of program, which is then going to change your whole community to be embracing languages, period.
Absolutely.
Cultures, period.
Right.
So there's more you can do as well.
Yeah. Great, okay, well, thank you. I want to, can we give a round of applause? And I want to also thank Dr. Morris so much for making this connection. I mean...
He is incredible, I have to say.
We do, we do.
I, I can tell you, he's an incredible superintendent, because he has been feeding me so much information, I'm like, "This is going to be so easy," because I'm getting so much background, which doesn't always happen, so. You're doing your homework very well, all of you. You're doing your homework very well, all of you.
Thank you.
Am I taking, like, a two-minute recess, just because there's a lot of people...
Let's take a two-minute break, just to get rid of the water and...
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was awesome. That was fantastic. That was awesome.
Well, great. Thank you so much.
That has to be already, like, the greatest launch of a school committee meeting in the entire time, I think. I've just really enjoyed that. I mean, especially building off of the work you guys did before.
Well, and it was so in-depth session, and it was really exciting.
Like, I feel like, and I just feel like, you know, we're really accelerating our understanding of this.
And also, for me to have done all that research and then have her come and say, like, exactly, it's like, we actually did it right.
And, and also, though...
And you're doing it before your term expires.
I know.
I know.
Maybe we should vote for something before we go.
You almost never hear, though, the opportunity of hearing, like, all the implementation challenges. How, somebody's like an expert, like, how, how did you solve this problem? How do you solve that problem?
Right.
It's like, usually, it's like, I don't know, let's figure it out together. In this case, no, they have...
And it's such a, like, yes, I mean, it's such a, for those of us who didn't experience it, obviously, which is most of us, like, it's like, you kind of have to believe that it could, and to have people who are so, you know, like, this, we've seen this many times before, yes, you're completely can do this, yes, we can hold your hand as you go through this, and, you know, here's what we recommend.
It's kind of a crazy thing, but it also means that it, sometimes it's actually nice not to be, even though it'll be new for us, sometimes it's nice, actually, not to be first, not people who've, like, done, maybe, because you know, you know that what we didn't talk about? I mean, we cheated a little bit. There must be districts that have made so many mistakes, like, all the time, and we'll make our own, I mean, if we do this, but, but, you know, we'll make fewer of them, maybe.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think that question is, you know, sort of, I can imagine the energy of, well, if we can't do it everywhere, then, you know, this isn't, this isn't the right model, you know? And it's like, I mean, on some level, I get it, but if we don't have the money to do that, and we can't do that now, then let's not, let's not, you know...
You know what's funny? Like, that was, that was sort of like where I was, when I was asking a question about how many schools do you roll it out to? But suddenly, it was starting, starting to strike me, the more we talked about this, is, wait, how are we gonna, like, pick one? Like, in the back of my head was the question that was asked from the audience of, so, we're gonna do this everywhere, right? And immediately, and it'll be great, right? Fascinating.
Of course, that's...
Yeah, yeah, fascinating. But, by the way...
Can I need to go?
I, I met, like, a bevy of hazards the other day.
I know.
And it's like, one hazard after another kept walking up, and I'm like, alright, this is interesting.
How many are there? I heard you with my mom.
Are you a local?
No, I'm not, that's what's strange.
See, I didn't think you were.
I'm not, but my, my aunt from the U-Mo when my cousins were really little.
Okay.
So my cousins went through, like, the whole system.
Okay.
And so, I grew up, like, coming, you know, visiting, sort of being aware of Amberst, and then my grandmother moved to Applewood.
Yeah.
And my other one moved to Calum.
Right.
And, you know, like, I visited Amberst when I was in seventh grade, because it's weird, like, my mother and I...
Well, that's the funny thing, I met, I met your aunt, your mother, your grandmother when you were there.
Not my grandmother.
No, my grandma?
My grandmother died, she was ninety-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay, she was ninety-seven, it was a good, it was a good long life.
No, I, yeah, I know.
So my mom...
I was just, I was...
Has very white hair, so that was very...
Okay.
My...
Must've been your aunt.
Do you need my Aunt Ann? I mean, how many were there?
I, I think there were more than two. I mean, I'm serious, because it's like...
And was there too?
I think there were, there were more than two.
There was two moms and a mom.
Because it was like, it was like, it was basically like, yeah, okay.
I know, it's pretty funny. And so then I moved in, and I said to my friends, like, look, I'm finally in Amberst, so you've been talking about Amberst as a promise, like, my whole life. Don't be on your deathbed not having...
Well, this is sort of the reason I'm asking, is I've, I've been in these town offices since nineteen seventy-four.
Right.
So at this point, I kind of am familiar with the actual townies.
Yeah, right, so you, you don't know...
But it seems like...
You know Ruth.
I, of course, I do.
You know Ruth.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So, so that's, she's the, I mean, Aunt, Aunt's a...
Well, but the thing is, that, like, Ruth is famous, so like, I know her...
Through, through, yeah.
The work she's, the work she's done, right? And so, but I mean, she's just famous in the area, but also, I've never thought her as being, like, a local, but I'm just saying, the number of, like, hazards that proliferate start making me feel like, okay, they must be local.
Thank you so much. Looking forward.
Did your parents...
No, no, no.
You're not a local, so I'm like, huh.
Oh, I didn't say, what?
I'm not saying...
No, I mean, I'm, I'm...
They're my cousins, too, because they...
Yeah, that's cool.
Oh, and then my mom has a sister, too. So I have, I have, I have my mom's...
But this is sort of what I mean, like, this is becoming, like, this is what I mean...
And my mom's cousin is here.
It's like a serious hometown.
No, it's, yeah, and yet, we're not...
Right.
Over...
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nice meeting you.
That was great. I'm so happy you came.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Yeah.
I need the... Yeah, there's such a buzz.
Yeah, I know.
Where's the cheese and crackers and wine?
It does seem like that kind of a...
Sean, do you have a flask?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm excited about that.
No one needs to see your line. I love it. I know you've sick kids right now. Um, sorry, I don't know if this, I don't think that's a secret, but I'd love to connect with you next week, I'm just, because things look a little, a lot different than what you saw a month ago.
Um...
My, um, the next meeting?
Okay.
So, if it's possible to connect.
Yeah.
But you can just get out of the fluids. Um, no, no, she doesn't have it.
No, I'm hoping, both my kids came down with ridiculous, like, feelings moving around. My eight-year-old is actually, he had two-and-a-half-hour naps, where he doesn't take naps, ever.
Yeah, right.
And every single day since Saturday, he's been taking a two-hour, two-and-a-half-hour nap on Saturday, two naps, walk up the ranch, he's like, hundred-two, hundred-three feet, you know? You know? It's pretty amazing.
Same here.
They also did another...
Thank you. You know, I don't know if you were planning on coming Thursday as well, or...
Yeah, I'm gonna come Thursday.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, thank you, that's him, I appreciate it. Well, one of the, our school committee members in another community, I'm conscious that this is, probably Delon, had all three kids, plus her, plus her husband, end of last week, at the end of, right before the break, on, and including some pneumonia from some of the, the saltenes. I mean, it was just, it sounded horrible. And my daughter had it, which I think I mentioned to you, and, yeah, thankfully, she recovered, like, right in time for when he went away, so, yeah, yeah. She took it very tight, so, yeah. Make a school or missing a trip, I think, I think this actually worked out well for her, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, and for all the rest of us, too.
Oh, Eric's not here. Oh, here, sorry, sorry, Eric. Didn't mean to, I wasn't trying to tap you into place.
I could make a statement.
I thought you were there.
I'm really not the last presentation.
Let's see. Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting back out of recess at, uh, seven forty.
That'd be good.
Okay. And, um, all right, so now we're gonna move on to item B, which is the MSBA Statement of Interest with a Possible Vote.
Yep. So I can do the introducing, and then Mr. McPherson can come up, so thank you for that conversation last time, when we talked about statements of interest. So as we discussed, and what we have ready for this time was, um, two statements of interest, one for Fort River, one for Wildwood School, with a prioritization for Fort River, based on our conversation. Um, and those are in the packet, and I want to thank Mr. McPherson for doing a thorough job of updating the information from the last time statements of interests were submitted, with some more current and up-to-date information. And I don't know if you want to walk through or take questions, Mr. McPherson, and they're pretty dense documents, so, um, I'm trying to think of the best way, sorry, this hazard, I didn't, uh, we didn't connect on it, just, best way to facilitate this, because, you know, it's probably fifty pages of documents, um, about the conditions of the school. So what would be the most helpful for the committee to, um, hear?
So, um, we have had on the agenda a possible vote. I guess I'm sort of, let's sort of figure out where we are.
Sure.
Um, so if we didn't vote, we wouldn't vote at our next meeting, I presume, which would be the twentieth. Is there any concern about that date, in terms of, sort of, timing of how this whole process goes?
So, it would just mean the select board would have to take a vote pretty shortly after, because they're due, I'll check the date, but I believe it's, it's in early April. Um, select board typically meets regularly, regularly meaning weekly, um, so I think that would be the only, um, challenge. And we do also have a regional meeting that starts at six-thirty next Wednesday, so if people wanted to get together for an Amberst meeting at six o'clock, um, just to finalize vote language and things, which I actually don't think is a bad idea to see this, even ask questions and then vote at a different meeting. Process-wise, to me, it makes sense, um, it's obviously your decision. Um, we could also do that, and that would kind of assure the select board plenty of time to get it on their agenda and for them to consider it. I think the twentieth pushes it a little bit.
It pushes it a little bit. Okay, so, I just want to make sure we all sort of know where we are. We have sort of, we have discussed this at a previous meeting, but we haven't seen this before. So if people feel really comfortable, like, let's just do this, we can do it, we could do it tonight, it's been on our agenda, but if not, we could probably ideally schedule it for, what's the next, what's the regional meeting again?
Wednesday, the seventh, I believe.
Wednesday the seventh, before, okay.
And it could be a normal time for an Amberst school committee meeting.
We could do it for half an hour. Um, so, I, I think maybe we'll turn it over to Mr. McPherson, sort of walk us through, and...
Sure, again, practicing my concise methods. Um, it's very similar to the previous submissions. Uh, we did update the information generally, and it covers, uh, environmental conditions within the schools and the configuration. That is the bulk of it, there's considerable repetition, um, and that is the thrust of it, and you're right, it's extremely dense, but that's what it says.
Yeah.
Questions? Perhaps one thing that I'd like to share, it crosses a little bit between school building committee work and school committee work, but I think it's highly relevant for this topic. One of the concerns that came up with the school building committee meeting, uh, meetings, was about that, since these schools were in, considered in the, an active process in 2016, when there was some site survey worked on of all schools in Massachusetts, would that have implications for this? And I spoke to the MSBA this morning, knowing we had the meeting tonight, and they indicated there was, there's no negative implications. So the site survey that gets done for all schools is very cursory, and this is, frankly, they, they have a lot more information on our schools than they have on just about any other school in Massachusetts, because it was so recently an in-depth study done. And so, uh, they didn't see a need for additional site study work, and they just wanted to make sure that the S. Statements of Interest were updated from the last Statement of Interest that were submitted, and I know Mr. McPherson's, you know, we went over this a couple times and has done that updating, so I feel like, um, from a perspective of, they have a lot of information about us, but we've updated the SOIs, I think that need has been met.
Okay. I just have a question, um, on the page where it says, it says potential project scope for both buildings, it says renovation slash addition.
Yes.
Does that not allow for a replacement if that was decided that was the best choice, or is...
That is an option. Um, given my very limited exposure to MSBA, that may not be our best option, because renovation, replacement, renovation, addition gives us a full range of opportunities to look at how the buildings might come out, similar to our discussions last night. Um, what do we want the schools to look like? How are they gonna be configured? Who do we want to have in them? How many do we want to have in them? Would fall better into a renovation, addition than a wholesale replacement. Maybe wholesale replacement would be the final, uh, decision, but leaving it in this category, I think, gives us the opportunity to explore.
So you have to designate one or the other?
Yes.
Got it. And so, but this does not, like, prevent replacement if it was decided that that would be the best way to resolve issues?
That is not my understanding at this time, correct?
Yeah.
I just, I, I think we want to check that very carefully, because we were, we were told in the last building project that renovation, replacement was actually what you're describing right now, and that's, I think, I believe, how the previous applications have been done, was to leave that option open, and a, a mention of addition was never put in there.
So, that, in fact, is a copy of what was submitted previously.
Addition was? Okay.
I, I copied over seventy-five percent of the language and then updated it, so that was an exact match.
Okay. Yeah.
Because that caught my eye also when I was going through there, and I remember reading the previous document and did not remember seeing that, but...
I am not a MSBA expert yet.
Yeah, no, I think it's, I think it's worth pursuing. I, I just, I also had one other, along the same lines, there was a lot of mention of overcrowding.
Yes.
And I, you know, given the conversations that we've had, in particular with these two buildings, about declining populations and the, among the students, I don't know that overcrowding is an issue that we want to, we want to cut in there.
Emphasize.
That was an issue maybe ten years ago, when it was first, the applications first started, but not currently.
So I believe we purged out all the overcrowding and used instead, um, two close quarters for the learning to take place effectively. Not that we were overcrowded with too many persons, but, or maybe I missed a section? We did? Okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I read it, you know, when I was reading it, so maybe just take a little love and see if there's anything in there.
Okay, absolutely. Absolutely.
Other thoughts, questions?
So this has been reviewed by the school building committee?
Yeah, this is not in their purview. So this would be in the purview of the school committee's lightboard.
Okay.
So, if there aren't more comments or questions, I guess I'd sort of like to get a general sense for the committee of, like, of how we'd like to proceed here. Would we, would people like to have another week to sort of review this and get our language around the motion? There, there's a motion sheet that they provide for us that we just have to follow to the letter, it's very specific requirements, yeah.
Um, and I guess maybe I'm looking towards Dr. Moore some, is, are we absolutely, absolutely positive that this question of what the designation of the project type is, is locked down, and we know that we're using? I mean, I get the notion that we want to have the full range of options from renovation to addition to a new building, as long as the language we're using actually genuine, authentically reflects that, in some sort of, like, binding way in terms of how it's reviewed by MSBA.
Right.
And so my point would be, I'd be perfectly comfortable approving this today if we knew for a fact that that was absolutely the right language, and if we weren't sure it wasn't, then I'd really like to wait a week and then make sure we have that answer rock solid.
I agree, I agree, yeah.
So the 2000 S. Statement of Interest, 2013 Statement of Interest that was accepted, I have it on my screen, has the exact same language, potential project scope, and I think it's worth checking.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think both things can be true, and I think in this case, they are, that I think, and I'd also like to, we don't have to do it at the meeting, but offline, just where you found the overcrowding language, because...
I'm just looking for it now.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, you don't have to, I don't mean it, you know, I mean, again, I would probably err on the side if the committee was comfortable voting next week so we can get total confirmation on that. And then we don't have to do this at the meeting, but Ms. Ordones could share where she saw that language because I think it is problematic if it stayed in there. It was in the original ones, but our population's different than what it was applied for. And we thought we caught them, but it's not to say that. I want to be a hundred percent sure before we formalize a document, so.
Okay, good. Okay, so that's, I think I've got a general sense that that's where we are. So we will have those pieces checked on and reported back for the next four. And so then we should put it on the calendar to post an Amherst school planning meeting at six o'clock on March 7th prior to the regional meeting?
That's agreeable.
Yeah. Is that agreeable to everybody? Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McPherson.
Okay, budget hearing.
So as Mr. Mangano is getting this set up, I'll just share that we shared this budget information with, we had an optional faculty meeting with the elementary staff on yesterday afternoon who received this information. We got some good feedback, which I'll integrate a bit of when we get into some of the adds, cuts. But I want to say I'm continually impressed with, despite some difficult budget times that we're facing, particularly because of health insurance, how staff are responding to some of the challenges that we're having. They ask really good questions. Our attendance is high at the meetings that we've had. And their level of engagement with not just the adds, cuts, but actually how the budget gets created and what some of the drivers are is just really impressive. I remember being a teacher and I'll admit that I was like, okay, just tell me the adds, cuts, like the first ten minutes we can get through. But, and that's not my experience with our faculty. They're much more mature than I was when I was teaching at Fort Rivers, I suppose. But I just want to say that out loud.
I'll take over, Ms. Mangano. Thank you. So tonight is the hearing. So we do a short presentation and Dr. Morris is going to jump in along the way. So we're going to look at the proposed budget, some planning unknowns, school choice funding, since that's sort of a key variable here. And then we'll get into the proposed additions and reductions. So the proposed budget hasn't changed since the last time. It's still twenty-three million, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, three-sixty-five, which is the three and a half percent increase from the town of Amherst less the increase in charter and choice tuition. The increase of the FY18 budget is about three-point-one percent. Again, that point four is the increase in charter and choice. Well, it's not the full three-point-five. And so that represents net reductions in this budget of five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, two-fifty-four from our level services rollover. Quick, sort of condensed summary of why we have net reductions this year. So the chart below shows categories of what has increased for FY19 over FY18. So these are, this is just the increase. So the biggest one by far is health insurance. You can see it's almost a, it's more than an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar increase over FY18. Next is payroll, just under three-hundred thousand. That's usually the largest piece of this, but because of the health insurance situation, it's not this year. And then the two other ones, other insurance and benefits, and all the other accounts are under a hundred thousand. So the key cost driver this year is health insurance. Some budgetary planning unknown, similar to what we talked about, the region level. We still have two sort of big unknowns. One is the health insurance rates for next year. The insurance advisory committee is looking at a range of options, but no option is set for next year, so there's still some uncertainty there. And wages are still being negotiated with four out of, five out of six units for the next multiple years. There's a wide range of financial impacts related to the health insurance situation. So depending what direction the insurance advisory committee decides to go, and ultimately the town decides to go, we could break even next year roughly financially, or there could be a large increase. So that's still, again, a big uncertainty. One thing we did last year, which is helping the budget this year as we anticipated, is putting the hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars away into a special ed reserve account has allowed us to reduce our unknown, our contingency in the budget like we were hoping, which has given us more flexibility with the budget this year. And then we'll talk about school choice in a second, but our school choice reserve is healthy. Any questions on the special ed reserve account? Is that clear? Okay. So this is the school choice, snapshot of the school choice fund. So the blue bar is how much we're pulling out of the school choice fund to support the budget for each of these years. So for FY15, which is one of the first years we did school choice, we supported the operating budget with about two-hundred thousand. As we've ramped up school choice, we've increased how much has been used to support the budget. And you can see for FY19, we're proposing about slightly over six-hundred, I think it's six-hundred-and-ten thousand to support the operating budget. The red line is how much school choice tuition comes into us for all the kids that we accept. So it's five thousand dollars per kid plus an increment for any special education needs. So you can see that has also ramped up. And the green line is the fund balance in our school choice reserve fund. So that has gone from a little under five-hundred thousand dollars to about eight-hundred thousand dollars. So we've tried to match, actually, we've tried to build up a fund balance for a while as the school choice program was relatively new. And now that it's sort of more mature and a stable place, we're trying to match our revenue and expenses going forward. Nakajima?
Sean, I'm sorry to ask you this question. It's actually based on the previous slide.
Sure.
It's Jermaine.
Yeah.
You, you'd made the comment or statement that there were a wide range of potential financial impacts associated with what they, I think the insurance advisory group decides?
Yep.
And I, I really need you to elaborate on that because it makes sense, we already have five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars in cuts in the current budget. What I'm trying to figure out, and you just mentioned that the contingency is being reduced. I'm trying to figure out in my head, are you, when you say a range of financial impacts, does that mean we could have unanticipated cuts we might have to make depending on how that comes out? Or what do you, is that what, not what you meant by that?
No, no, I think, I think there are, there's a wide range of financial impacts. So I'll give you an example. So the insurance advisory committee has put out rates of what our insurance rates would look like next year if we do nothing. So if we keep, say, self-insured, we don't make any changes to plan design or anything like that, they've given us an estimate of what those rates would look like, and it's a large increase in our, in our budget for health insurance. We've also looked at rates for if we go to another trust and what that would look like with plan design changes. In that situation, the rates stay pretty flat. So I don't want to say one is more likely at this point, but that's what I mean by that.
Is our, is our budget based on sort of a middle case between really good and really bad?
So our budget is closer to the flat. We have some contingency in there, but we haven't, the, the increase to the really bad is so significant that to budget for that, I think at this point, and if it goes the other way, would be tough. But I think at this point, again, it's, it's not like one is more likely than the other. And I think we're all working towards the good case scenario. But again, I just wanted to be clear that it's not determined yet. Excellent. Thank you. Any questions on the school choice reserve fund? So I'm going to switch over to.
Yeah, sure. So we thought of guiding principles, similar but not the same as at the regional level. So one is to maintain class size. We actually think we'll see reduction, slight reduction in average class size in our district next year. The second, and this is really based off some of the feedback that I received, the first two, when I did the listening tour after I was hired in the fall. Class size came up as a huge variable for classroom teachers in a whole lot of ways about differentiating the curriculum, meeting individual student needs, really building classroom community where students felt like they knew the teachers, teachers knew them. The second was about the mental health needs in buildings. One of the things I heard from teachers was just the increasing levels of trauma that students are, have experienced in their, not in their classes, but the students in their classes have experienced in their lives. And just how valuable our mental health team is to the functioning of classrooms on a regular basis. The third priority we had is to preserve full-time specialists. So there's no reductions despite the budget number we're trying to hit, which is a reduction over five-hundred thousand dollars. There's no reductions at all to full-time specialists or paraeducators that work in libraries or other areas around specials. And we've been able to avoid reductions in force, which we'll get into in a second. So we looked at places where there was attrition. To Mr. Demling's point at the regional meeting, not to cross, but I assume you're speaking. More globally is that we have a really talented faculty and staff, and we want to retain them as long as we can do that in reasonable ways that kids feel supported. We want to retain as many of them as we can despite our fiscal situation. So there were some budget adjustments, budget additions and budget reductions. The adjustment is that there's a reduction in one classroom. It's just based on enrollment, number of sixth grade classes leaving, number of anticipated kindergarten enrollments. We have teachers retiring, so this doesn't affect any individual permanent classroom teacher at all in terms of people we have on board, but we will have one fewer classroom. We anticipate having one fewer classroom next year. As Mr. Mangano, you saw on the chart that we increased the choice fund, funding support. Our gap between what we're taking in and what we're spending, you know, let me say that differently because it's not what I meant. The gap between what we're losing in choice, choice kids who are leaving out has gone down pretty significantly. And our choice in money has gone up, so we're trying to match that a little closer, especially given the fiscal climate, to reduce the level of cuts because we built up that balance, I mean, eight-hundred thousand dollars is a pretty healthy balance, and we're not reducing it much next year. In terms of additions, so we have a seven-thousand-dollar add for preschool. I want to be really clear that this, the model shift is not done yet. I'm actually meeting along with a bunch of other folks with preschool teachers tomorrow. We're still trying to figure out what that model looks like, how they're going to meet more students' needs. Right now, we have, we've talked about it here. Our number of students with special needs, who've identified special needs in the preschool is more than we have slots for, so we're looking at some model changes. We're also looking at model changes for two other, two other reasons. One is when I met with preschool staff in the fall, one of the things they told me was that the time for them to collaborate around the education of three-to-five-year-olds whose needs change on a regular basis. Having a four-year-old, I get it. Just one day seems smooth, next day you don't know what's happening. And, and I'm not trying to, I'm not their teacher. So that we really need to try to build that in. And the second is that some of the intensity of the needs of our students have caused us to question whether the integrated model is the right fit for all of our students. So that's an active conversation that we're having. So I think we'll get to our next meeting. I know when we get to our next meeting, I'll have more concrete information. So seven-thousand dollars in some ways is a placeholder, but we know that we're going to have to change some of the staffing hours and step in some staff around any model changes. So we wanted to put some funds, modest funds that we could in there. The second is for ELL. So some of this, as much as I love what Ms. Hardy said about the LOOK Act, there's, this is not her fault. The state, of course, included increased reporting requirements, significantly increased reporting requirements for ELL students. And that's not a bad thing, but it needs to get done. So a small portion of this is Ms. Richardson, who you met, who was here tonight, she's no longer here. But to increase the amount of time she's split between teaching and coordinating, and so increase her coordination time. And the other increase is actually at Crocker Farm, we've had a significant increase in ELL students. And when we looked at the percentages, they were really out of whack in terms of number of students and FTE across buildings. And we didn't feel like we could take FTE away from Wildwood or Fort River because their numbers aren't going down. It's just that Crocker Farm's going up. So some of this is increased, about half of it's an increase in coordination and half of it's an increase in direct teaching time in ELL services at Crocker Farm. And the last one, you'll remember from the region, we looked at our out-of-school time coordinator and redistributed his salary to more reflect his split between Amherst and region because he's really working only in Amherst. So this is an addition, but it's not really, it's just actually an adjustment to reflect what he actually does and where he actually works. So here's the reduction aspect. So I'll start at the top. So we currently provide either appropriations or grant funding, fifty thousand dollars for after-school tuition vouchers, which is great. We're very unique, we're unique in doing this because after-school programs have their own way of getting vouchers and supporting students who may need it. So it is reducing our support, which is hard to do. But when we thought about our K-2-6 program and looked at other comparable districts who don't provide any support for their private after-school programs, we felt like this was a reasonable thing that we could do. The receptionist position, sorry, a lot of these are split between region and Amherst, so it's going to sound really familiar for those of you who've been in the region meetings. So this is a vacant position that will just not fill around reception and central office, which will have an impact on the family center and superintendent office. District-wide, all the principals, central office, non-unit staff are taking no wage increase and no step. So that results in Amherst a slightly different number than region, about thirty-one thousand dollars. The procurement specialists, who Ms. Nakajima has gotten to know very well, who is wonderful, who's split between the towns. So this will put more strain on the business office to do more of the procurement. Mr. Sheehan, who was here earlier, his role was reclassified from a director, which is a year-long role, to a coordinator, which is more a school year plus a couple of days role. And you can see the relevant savings there. Because we're having fewer staff, well, fewer health insurance rates. So it's not a reduction, just to be really clear. It's not like what Mr. Mangano said was incorrect in terms of the increase in health insurance rates, but it's just having fewer people having health insurance because we're having, reducing FTEs. We're prepaying retirement incentives, so contractually, when we have retirements, we have to, there's incentives, depending on years of service and age, that we pay. And so this is paying out of this year's budget, so we don't have to pay it out of next year's budget, which we typically would do. We did take a small bit out of the staffing contingency, not as much as region, twenty-one thousand, which still leaves quite a bit. And as Mr. Mangano said, we have got the hundred-and-fifty that we banked last year for unanticipated special needs costs, the students with special needs, cost of educating them. Supply reduction of seventy thousand dollars is ten percent across the board. One of the pieces of feedback we got from staff yesterday was that classroom teachers now get two-hundred dollars for their classroom supplies. And would that ten percent be across the board affect that line? Or would it, would it operate differently? So we're reevaluating, it won't affect this chart or the numbers, but theirs comes from a lump sum that's building-based. So we've met with principals, we're going to meet again tomorrow morning. How do we not affect that two-hundred dollars that goes to classroom teachers? Because we know that's frankly insignificant, not insignificant, insufficient for the amount of purchasing that classroom teachers do. So I think we'll be able to resolve the concern we heard from staff yesterday. But that's a ten percent across the board. Maintenance, this is, again, you've heard it at region, but we had HVAC specialists who retired and using Mr. McPherson's expertise in HVAC, just absorbing that position. Curriculum supplies and contracted services. So this is not at the teacher level. This would affect kind of consultants and some other folks of who we bring in for, for different things. We looked at past spending, and we feel like we can make this cut without affecting us too greatly. Arts integration coordinator, so a couple of years ago, three, four, three years ago, we took half, twenty percent of John Bechtold and put him at the elementary level to help coordinate some of the arts integration efforts when it's getting off the ground. The good news is this is off the ground and going really well. And we feel like that work can be transferred to Mr. Sheehan, who's got a strong sense of elementary, strong elementary background. And it was a way to, again, to preserve the specialists while still getting to our budget. And the last one probably takes the most explanation, which is intervention paraeducators. So this is reshaping the math coach positions to be much more aligned with the reading specialists. So it's increasing the direct teaching time that our math specialist, math coaches would do. It reduces their coaching time. And it, but it more matches what we have for the reading. And we're not implementing, you know, we've got math coaches, we're implementing a new program. Again, that program's been implemented. It's not, not taking away from their work. They do, they presented pretty well, they do fantastic work. And they were all spoken to yesterday about this, and they're interested in co-creating what that role would be and how to maintain the most critical parts of AVMR, which you heard about, and that professional development. So that'll be an ongoing process. Because they'll be teaching more, we'll be able to reduce the paraeducators who teach intervention because they'll be being taught by them. The, the good news from a kid perspective, student perspective, is that we'll have some of our neediest math students being taught by our highest-quality math educators. So it's not a cut we'd make necessarily if there was no budget impact. But I think there is a real silver lining for students who will have more opportunity to work with our highest level, highest caliber math educators in the district. When I said there's no rifts before that we were anticipating, there are some paraeducator positions open across the three districts that I'm superintendent for, very different than teachers who have a licensure that usually binds them. When we've had this situation before, we've worked with the Educator Association, with the union, to make sure that all our paraeducators get placed. In addition, our transitivity rate, we usually hire eight to ten paraeducators every year. So I'm not concerned that those four people won't have places to, to work in our district. And we already know some paraeducators have indicated they're often doing other things, going back to grad school, lots of other things. So we, I do feel, I do know that we won't have to, in Amherst, have any reductions to any individual. People will be in different roles, and I want to minimize that. Ends up with a net reduction of, as you can see, between five and six staff members. Gets us to the budget number of reduction of five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars. And for me, I think retains the core of what we're trying to do in our district while making some cuts. Again, if money was no object, I wouldn't be making many of these cuts. But I think we're able to retain the core of what our mission is and still make our numbers work. Anything I missed, Sean? No?
Great, thank you.
That's it. I'll leave that slide up. One quick thing, you may have said this in the tuition vouchers, actually. So I think you said at least fifteen thousand in the operating budget. We also get money from Amherst College, which is another ten or fifteen thousand in addition. So we'll still have roughly thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty, thank you.
Yeah.
In after-school?
Yeah, for after-school tuition vouchers for next year.
Compared to currently fifty?
Yeah, currently it'd be the forty plus, yeah, around fifty, yeah.
So I have a question about that one. Are you able to sort of articulate, you know, the extent that that may affect access for kids who, you know, are kids who are currently going, not going to be able to go because they can't afford it? To be very, you know, blunt, is that what's going to happen?
Yeah, I think it's hard to say for sure if they won't be able to go. I think it's the level of voucher. So I think we can touch base with out-of-school time coordinator, actually, and see, get a number from them, what that would mean.
Okay. So this is also a public hearing. So, you know, we'll, questions from the committee, and then we'll open it for any questions that are from the audience. Any questions from the committee here?
Just to verify, so at the Amherst level, we also had a reduction in the choice and charter out. Is that right? Past project presentations had a slide on that, but that was a, that was a positive variable in a.
Yeah, we went from, I think, eighty-six charter school students, like eighty-three. So there was a real reduction, and choice went down a few as well.
That was the first reduction in.
For, in a long time, in the charter realm for a long time, yeah.
And so I'm looking at a lot of these reductions, and, you know, one Ms. Hazard brought up is a good example of these kind of small cuts. And then I'm looking at the, the choice balance, that is eight-hundred thousand. And I know we say that's a healthy balance. And I guess I'm just wondering, and I know you can play this game forever, right? It's like, well, what if the choice balance was seven-ninety and not eight-hundred? Couldn't you, you know, increase vouchers by ten thousand? You can always move that around. I guess, other than just eyeballing that chart and saying, gee, that looks, that line looks like it's going to be healthy there. Is there, is there any thought given to, well, this is a rather large cut this year, could we take one steep, you know, chunk out of it?
Yeah, I would. I think makes, our experience in Pelham is a helpful example and the experience that another district that's not ours, but feeds into our district is another good one who are managing it now. So this is the first year, which makes people like Mr. Mangano very anxious, rightfully so, that the blue line's above the orange line. And so the problem is, when you start getting used to that, you create an operational, a functional deficit in your budget that you need to resolve. And so the concern is that you get too reliant on the choice funds. And then at some point, you're going to have to make some significant reduction because you can't maintain that over time. I definitely hear you, and I'm the kind of person who asks that question of Sean all the time. But I actually think, my personal opinion in this case, I agree with Mr. Mangano, that I think we're making, this is a particularly unusual year in terms of health insurance, we hope, right? And so we are kind of dipping in a little bit. But every time you're doing that, you're creating a structural deficit in your budget. And the larger that structural deficit is, somewhere down the line, you're going to have to pay that price. And so the concern is, the larger that deficit gets, the more of that concern. And I, I don't disagree with your point, and we definitely are open to taking feedback from the committee on that, but I think that's the concern. Yes, the balance is healthy, and, you know, frankly, it was in many communities and, you know, frankly, it was in many communities where now, you know, you sort of get addicted, and that's a weird word to use, but it becomes part of, you have a structural deficit that's part of your operating budget, until you address that, you start going down a slide, and you're reliant on funds that aren't real in the end, so.
Yeah, and I think, I'll point out two things for FY19, we are increasing, you can see about 50%, we were at about $400,000, for FY18, we're going up to $600,000, so that's a pretty large increase from one year to the next. And the proposed revenues, again, that's an estimate at this point, so it could come in higher, it could come in lower, I think one of the things we've seen in Pelham is, you know, it's really hard to predict, like, if it's going to come in lower, there's a whole host of reasons why the revenue could come in lower, so that gap could grow or could shrink, but I think we want to be safe with that.
And I have, I mean, in spirit, I agree with you, and like that, but one reason I was picking on that earlier slide was because a year ago, when we were talking about the budget, we felt comfortable that we were in a better place than we ended up being, and so for me, I'm not, I would rather have a situation where you come back sometime within FY19 and say, hey, it looks like the insurance advisory group found a solve that's working better for us, and it turns out, you know, there aren't unanticipated adds and costs, like adding a new teacher here, there are something there that just simply needs to be done, and then you come back and say, but it turns out we're running ahead, and so now we'd like to come back to, we have a nice problem to solve, like sometime next year, of coming back to the committee and saying, we'd like to restore some of these items, rather than the worst-case scenario, which is, if not exactly as bad as this year, something analogous mid-year would be really horrible.
Questions? I just had one more question, just maybe a little bit more, you alluded to this, but with the math coach instruction positions, was, is there any sense that that's going to, when you said that they're going to try to maintain the, you know, the core pieces of AVMR, are we sort of backpedaling on that, or you just, it's more that that's in place, and now we don't need that coaching support, or, you know, we don't need, it's nice to have it, but if the program can continue in, with integrity, without that level of coaching support?
Yeah, we do think that, I mean, we had a conversation after our optional meeting yesterday with one of the math coaches, you know, I think we're trying to figure out a model, again, much like the reading specialists, who are able to do ongoing professional development, it's not AVMR, it's, you know, it's in literacy, within their role and working on, you know, kind of a four-day, you know, we're just messing around with models, does it make sense to have four days where there's intervention, and then one day that's really dedicated to the PD and coaching a week, where, you know, kids who are getting intervention get it four days, which is not an atypical model in general. So we're still working, but we want to actually tap the expertise of the math coaches to help us think about that, but there's no lack of commitment to AVMR trainings continuing, because we're seeing the results and the fruits of that across our district, it's really how it can happen, and, you know, teaching them together, the courses taught differently, right, individually, within a school versus a district, so there's a lot of model shifts that we're looking at, and again, we just had these, principals had these conversations with math coaches yesterday, so it's going to be ongoing conversations that we have. But the AVMR piece is, as one of the math coaches, you know, we have to figure out how that's going to fit in and be a core part of their role, because that's, we feel like everyone's bought into that being a critical part of the development of our educators across the district.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to, this is the budget hearing, public is invited to come up and share any thoughts, questions, so, give just a moment. All right, it looks like we're not having any speakers tonight, but thank you all for being here, regardless. So, anything further on this? Okay, great, thank you very much, Mr. Mangano. All right, so our school choice vote is our next item. Do we have a motion for this?
I'm not sure that there is one here.
Can I provide a bit of context, and perhaps even suggest some language? So every district, every district in Massachusetts has to vote each year, thank you, on whether it wants to accept new school choice students, and just to clarify, this is not, wouldn't affect, whatever the vote is, wouldn't affect current school choice students who are already in the district, so the question is, for you all to vote on, is whether you want to vote to continue accepting new school, continue being a school choice district, which means you accept new school choice students, or not. So I think the motion, whichever way you go, would be to be a school choice district for the 2018-2019 school year, or to not be a school choice district for the 2018-2019 school year. My recommendation would be to continue being a school choice district, we're not looking to add massive numbers of choice students, it looks like maybe we just have spots in K and 6, K, obviously, we don't know until screening happens, 6 is variable based on number of sections we end up with, which we're still working out at one of our schools, but we have had an increase in school choice students in the past couple of years, and we're looking just to sort of maintain, not to increase the number of school choice students, where I think we're at, we all feel, me, by we, me, principals, we're at a healthy level, and I think adding more is not something that we're looking to do in terms of adding to the percentage, but we're losing some, because some of our sixth-grade students are choice students, they're going to seventh grade, so it's trying to keep the number, which is about 92 right now, keep it pretty stable. To do that, we might have to add some in kindergarten, and perhaps sixth grade.
Okay, so I know school choice is always sort of this next thing, because we are sort of aware of both its benefits for families and the influence on other districts, and, you know, it's complicated, and this is where we are. So, open to comments, prepare to take a motion, wherever people are, yeah.
I move that we, that the AMERST public schools be a school choice district for the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes, just a note for, I think, you know, probably future conversations, it'd be great to maybe have a little more in-depth conversation around school choice and what it represents, and I think Mr. Mangano just did a good job of showing us, you know, kind of trying to keep that balance. There's always recurring conversations around this item and this issue, and this might be my own sort of, you know, personal observation, and I might be wrong, but I always feel like we're a little ambivalent about kind of where we are around, even though we vote for and we are a school choice district, we're always expressing this, like, concern about, you know, whether taking on too many students, or, you know, the impact that it might have on other communities, and I think those are all really good questions, but I think just having an ongoing conversation with the committees and with the public around school choice, and it's important, and sort of helping us maybe find our center on this topic would be really, really helpful.
Yes.
And I think it might be useful, since I have two chairs at the table, for it to be a joint AMERST and regional conversation, or perhaps even wackier, an AMERST-region-Pelham conversation, because all these decisions that are made at the elementary level filter up and have huge impact on the region. So I agree with that opinion, I think it's a weighty conversation, particularly as we talked at the beginning in superintendent update, about looking at building use at the secondary level. One of the things that we talked about, I think, at the region was, you know, we don't take that many new students at the region, because the number of students we're getting from the elementary school, not just from AMERST and Pelham, but from Leavenworth and Shute's Bay, has been increasing, and so there is this interconnection between the three districts, and actually, the five districts, that work together on choice, so I would welcome that discussion.
Great, thank you. Further discussion?
Yeah, and I was actually going to build off of what Mr. Mangano said, because I completely agree. I, to me, the broader question of some of the challenges philosophically of school choice are, those are fine issues to bring up, but that's sort of like a bigger conversation. To me, in terms of the school committee planning with you, the district, the sort of more nuts and bolts, practical question of even understanding how we understand or model, I guess, you know, where we think we have extra seats, and then how they, you know, how they migrate through the school levels, and then how they have impacts down the road, how we understand what our risk tolerance is associated with those decisions, those to me are, so you actually answered my question right at the beginning, when you said, eh, looking at a handful, not too many kids, really trying to keep a level balance, that was actually my big question, but of course, I think Mr. Mangano is right, that that's sort of the punchline to what could be a longer conversation, that says, here's what we're looking at, here's what the trends, and at least, I don't know if it's every other, every year, every other year, doing actually a deep dive, where we actually really look at, how many seats are we seeing in different grade levels, and what do we think our capacities are, and how do we understand that relating to these questions of capacity and fiscal challenges would be just a good thing, I think it'd be healthy.
I agree.
Yeah. Okay, ready to take a vote? Okay, all those in favor? Great, it's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, charter school expansion request appeal, so Mr. Demling, VMS Westmoreland, sent us an updated letter to the Board of Education members in preparation for the hearing of the appeal. Mr. Demling, would you like to speak to it a little bit?
Sure, so just to bring everybody up to speed who might be watching, so UCICS requested an expansion, submitted it last summer, we submitted a letter, it looks almost exactly like this letter, except for the yellow highlighted portions, so the yellow highlighted portions are what I added, or in some cases changed. So at that point, we wrote a letter, the school committees, to the acting commissioner, asking him not to approve the expansion. This past January, he issued his decision not approving the expansion with the possibility of appeal. The school then appealed the decision, and so the process now goes to the March 27th, nothing happening on that date, meeting of the Board of Education, which they'll hear the appeal. And so, at this point, it's now a letter to the board saying, asking them to support and the commissioner's decision. So I basically took the previous letter and addressed it to the board instead of to the commissioner, and just added some language saying that we're asking you to affirm the decision. I did change one word here on the third bullet, would have a major impact, it used to say dramatic. I, just on second reading of that, knowing that the funding formula is not a strong argument that resonates with the board, and that, you know, we're essentially expressing our gratitude and asking them to uphold the commissioner's decision, so I just toned that down to major, and just sort of, because we're now getting into an appeal, and so there's multiple levels of requests, I just, a couple of other word changes there, and then just added a paragraph on this first page, saying, you know, essentially that we are asking them to affirm his request, and just took the key sentence from the commissioner's letter about what he was asking the school to do. And, so just another couple of word changes, at the very end, we're stating that we're asking to the board to affirm the commissioner's decision, and then updating the timeline and the references at the very end. So that's the letter. In terms of what we do, you know, last year it was much different, because the commissioner had, one, I wasn't on the committee room, so that was different, but the commissioner had approved the expansion, and so it was a much different posture to take, right? And so there's a lot of, so this, I think, is a different situation, it's a different tone, and so in terms of what we do, I think I would feel that resubmitting this letter to the board would be appropriate, perhaps reaching out to other school committees, just suggesting that they resubmit their letters, and then possibly also speaking at the, going to the education meeting, and just speaking essentially these main themes and points. There's an opportunity typically at these decisions that are made at the board for a pro and con, so I would expect the school to come and state their case, and so this would be an opportunity for us to do that, and, you know, as well as reach out to other school committees in the region who had expressed an opinion on this topic to maybe join us as well.
Great, well, thank you very much for doing that, it's a good step in this process. So I guess at this point, do we want to, you know, vote to send this, to vote to have this go forward to the board, have it sent out? And I might also task somebody, possibly Mr. Demling, if he's willing, to go forward with those conversations with other boards, just to encourage them to follow suit. Other thoughts on how we might want to proceed here? Or does that sound about where we are? Yeah?
That sounds good to me, I mean, I think especially, the fact that you didn't make a lot of dramatic changes, essentially the same letter that went to the commissioners going to the board, and it's just saying, hey, you know that cool thing the acting commissioner did? We agree with it. Full stop, basically, you know, I think putting some pressure or being a little bit in the face of the board that we actually are paying attention and care is good, but I wouldn't want to overdo it, so I think that makes sense to me.
Okay. Yeah?
I completely agree with that, I also appreciate the tone that was reinforced in this letter, because I think it's very important, as you mentioned, and strategic at this stage of advocacy, so it makes a lot of sense.
So, shall I take a motion? I think I will, yeah. Yeah?
I move to accept the letter to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as presented at our meeting tonight.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Great. Okay, so our process for sending this, how did we do it last time? Did Ms. Westmoreland help us with this, or?
Yeah, I think you sent the final formatted version to Ms. Westmoreland, so I can send you the...
Okay, would that be okay with you, Demling? Okay, that's great, and I'll send it to the board members. And, Mr. Demling, would you be willing to reach out to the other committees?
I will do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Are you looking at me with other thoughts? Oh, is that the next thing on our list? That's so exciting! We have some guests, Mr. Nakajima, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to move for the committee to accept the following donations, Alliance Energy LLC, check number 24295, and the amount of $500 to support Math Science at Wildwood Elementary School.
Second.
Second.
Hey, discussion. All those in favor? Great, thank you very much. Hey, we are doing pretty well. Okay, so sort of any planning? So we have a list here of what is coming up, maybe just take a minute to look at that and see if people have any comments, thoughts. Let's see, Mr. Demling, you did email myself and Dr. Morse today about the possibility of sort of, you know, maybe addressing some of the advocacy work that's going on as a result of the tragedy in Florida.
Yeah, so, so there's just, I've just been talking with community members and seeing things written, and there certainly seems to be national, state, and local interest galvanizing around demonstrations, walkouts, typically at the high school level, but there's also been some interest expressed at lower-grade levels, and so, you know, that would come into AMERST here, so I just thought it would be a topic that we ought to talk about, get some perspectives from, I guess we could task the superintendent maybe for reaching out to the elementary principals to see what their input would be, because I think it's, at the AMERST level, K-6, it's more of a principal-building safety of students, you know, how that all works, kind of, because it's less common, we've had walkout protests at the high school in the past, it's not really a thing that has not happened.
Given the age range, I also don't anticipate that that would be appropriate for, I mean, just in terms of what, yes.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
So, I think a couple of things, one is certainly, we'll be talking about this at the regional meeting next week, tomorrow morning, I'm spending much of the morning with the principals, you know, to Mr. Demling's point, K-12, pre-K-12, because, well, I think there's certainly more focus on walking out in general. At the secondary level, there's also a lot of interest, I know, in the community about how to advocate on the issue of gun safety and school safety, pre-K-12, and so how that looks is what we're working on developing tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with the police chief on Thursday, I believe, around similar topics, so I think by the time we meet again, I'll have communicated with all stakeholder groups about how we're approaching March 14th, and so if it wants to be on the agenda, if it makes sense to be on the agenda March 13th, that'd be fine, but prior to that date, there'll be communication, a broad communication to all stakeholder groups about how we're approaching it, what are the venues that are age-appropriate for advocacy, and what does that look like for your high schooler versus your second grader, which are going to look functionally different just based on developmental needs of kids. So whether it's on there or not, I'm happy to, you know, share that, and I always think, but the transparency is good, even if there's an email, even if we... but the transparency is good, even if there's an email, even if we discuss it here, there doesn't necessarily need to be a formal vote, but on anything, but at least we're having that discussion of, and it's a critical topic separate from March 14th, it's a critical topic that's not date limited, right? School safety and how we approach them. We had police officers here at a prior meeting talking about election safety, and I think I forwarded you something today, yesterday, today, about that topic at a state level. So I do think it's an ongoing topic, and I think perhaps it's an opportunity to talk both about advocacy in the short run, but also long-term advocacy and planning.
Yes. I'd say that I can just add, you know, I had communicated with the superintendent and with the chair of the regional committee a couple of weeks ago after Parkland happened around just understanding, you know, how we are taking into consideration the emotional safety of our students and teachers that are going through these drills repeatedly, and there's all these things that have been popping up throughout social media and elsewhere about people just feeling incredible levels of stress and hopelessness, you know, of having to go through these drills and not understanding exactly whether or not that has any impact. And there's other things related to restorative justice practices, and things that we can be doing to support students and individuals that may be going through things at home or elsewhere that are traumatic, and that may cause these kinds of violent outbursts and actions to be taken. And so, you know, at the elementary school level, I think it would be really helpful to hear more about the emotional safety of students. And I know that at the individual schools, we have an incredible system of, you know, both counselors and teachers and principals working together, and special education services as well to support students. But I think walking us through that as well, and helping to, you know, help it to understand how that system helps prevent these kinds of things, and also if there's anything that we could be doing to improve that emotional safety of students going through these drills on a regular basis, right? And so that they're not feeling that they are being further victimized by these situations, which are important for their safety, physical safety, but, you know, you have to wonder too, like, what's the long-term impact of something like that? Are we normalizing this kind of violence? And are we allowing our, you know, the next generation to be growing up in this environment where this is normal, this is okay, right? And, you know, we don't necessarily want that to happen, so I would just love to hear that as well, if the committee agrees.
Yes.
Yeah, I, you see, our next Amherst School Committee meeting is on the 13th, and the walk, the walkout that is being potentially floated is on the 14th, right? I just, I wonder whether, and if this is a dumb idea, just say so, given the fact we have a meeting of the regional committee next week, and given the fact that we're going to have an Amherst School Committee meeting before the regional meeting, does it make any sense to put this item at the beginning of the regional agenda and have a joint meeting of the Amherst and regional school committees where you could talk about the spectrum of this issue, from what the response is at elementary and also middle school and high school? Because otherwise, we have, I mean, I know, I know why we do it, so I respect it. We have, like, really weird conversations where we pretend half the time we have no secondary level, and half the time we have no elementary level. But this is one of those issues that people are looking at integratively, and they just, if they have kids in both levels, they want to hear about both levels, they don't want to wait a week. Does that make sense, or no?
That makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me, I don't speak for the committee.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. So that would mean that we would extend, I mean, we're going to have an Amherst meeting anyway, so we're going to just extend it.
Yeah, just extend it however long we need to do, whatever the time would be. Because also, just to say, I met with the superintendent today about this. The way we had drafted this item, it was more encompassing, so that if somebody wanted to bring up, I don't know, boycotts of Delta Airlines, or they wanted to bring up issues of how we're helping prevent incidents of violence, or if they want to bring up walkouts, and what the response is in safety at different schools, you know, our way of framing it for the regional agenda was to have it broaden up that you could, we would allow for different topics to be discussed that we know are really deeply felt in the community, and the staff's working on it, and families are concerned about it. Anyways, so I just, it could echo that if we wanted to.
Is that our hand?
No.
No. Okay. Okay. We in a good place around planning?
I neglected to mention something that came up, I meant to bring up in the MSBA Statement of Interest discussion, which is, there was a topic at the School Building Committee meeting last night, and I sort of talked about School Building Committee meeting, but I neglected this one aspect, which was relevant, was that as we have some transency or turnover in School Building Committee membership, since the committee was formed by the school committee, there was a question that came up with the School Building Committee about whether, kind of roles and responsibilities, the school committee reassign membership, or since you formed the committee, the building committee, can they self-manage any changeover, turnover in membership themselves? I don't know if Mr. Nakajima is a member, has something else to add on that topic?
No, I, I don't. I believe, if I'm correct, the chair had expressed an opinion on this matter, but when the committee talked yesterday, we felt, we just felt that to make sure that as we move forward, everyone knows what's going on, and everyone's on the same page, that we wanted to bring that conversation to the, to the full committee.
Right, so, my, I don't think we've discussed this.
We haven't.
We have not discussed this.
No, that's.
So, I mean, I think my leaning on this would be for us to allow the School Building Committee to make its own appointments, now that it has a chair and its own, it is its own entity apart from us. Other people may have different opinions. If that was the, the, you know, we could, we could take a vote now, and to, you know, grant them that power to do so. That's, that's one process, I don't know if other people have other thoughts about how we might go about this, yeah?
I don't know if I'd be comfortable taking a vote right now, just because when the question was raised a minute ago, I could see a little bit of both sides. So, I mean, we spent a long time coming up with that list, and who ought to be qualified, and how is it going to be composed? So part of me thinks that just to let it, that the school committee be completely hands-off in terms of how that might change overall, what is going to be a long period of time for that committee, I'm not totally sure.
Okay.
I might eventually come around to saying, oh, that's, that's fine, but I might need a little more than right now to think through that.
What kind of timeframe do you need on your, this decision? I mean, I think it's more just sort of the urgency of them needing their members to be sitting.
We, I think from the, well, I'd say two things to this. One, the committee had a deeply felt position that wanted to ensure that the school committee was comfortable with what it was doing. So if we need more time, then, or we need more time, because I'm here, then, then, then the committee is going to be more comfortable knowing that the committee is fully behind what we're doing. That said, we have a member of the committee exiting like any day now, and the committee does have a pretty significant need to resolve that.
And does the, I'm sorry.
No, no. It looked like you had a solution.
I just wanted to ask, does the committee feel that they would, their preference would be to select a member themselves, or would they, was there a decision?
They were, they were perfectly comfortable making that decision themselves.
Yeah.
But that, that shouldn't be considered binding on what this committee does.
Not binding, but I just wanted to know what their, sort of the felt experience of them was.
So just process-wise, because I think, I'm actually getting concerned, because it's not explicitly on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. Yes, I apologize, unless it was in the SOI, but it's not really.
No, but it, that was, that was a push. So I wonder if the, since the SOI conversation likely will be relatively brief, given the couple of comments that we need to resolve, if we could have that be a five-minute agenda item for next Wednesday, and then have this be a 20-minute item, and if we can't resolve it, then we have, they'll have to wait. But the next School Building Committee meeting is not until the 12th of March.
Okay.
So there is a little, you know, if we, that's why I'm thinking about timeline, is if we added that as a second item, because I, unless I'm reading the room wrong, I don't think the SOI conversation is going to be more than five minutes the next time, and there's two outstanding issues, which I think we're able to resolve.
Yes, I think that's true, yeah.
So I don't know if that gives people think, time to think about it as well.
Yeah.
I would agree with that as well, and I think it addresses Mr. Demling's question or concern about, you know, us not having enough time to weigh it, so.
Absolutely. Yes, I don't, I never intend to rush anything. I just want to put the option, I always want to put the option out there, that if we're ready, we can move forward with things, because sometimes, you know, you don't actually move forward when you could.
So another thing, we used, we used to have a standing school feasibility committee update item on the agenda.
Right.
It would be awesome if we could throw that back on, just so there's a place on the agenda, even if we couldn't vote that night, there's a place for me to bring stuff back to the committee that comes up like this. That's why this sort of got orphaned when, when Mike didn't bring it up, because there wasn't another opportunity to talk about it.
Great, thank you for reminding us of that. Okay, so I think we're set. Yes, okay, we'll take a motion.
Move to adjourn?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. You didn't hit the little gavel you think.
What?
There you go.
It's huge.